Due to a conflict in scheduling, Berkeley Public Eye was unable to video record the Berkeley Planning Commission meeting on June fourth. This was an important public hearing on the middle housing ordinance. According to the sign-ins, seventy-seven people attended. The early crowd attending occupied all seats and those coming in a bit late had to stand along the walls. Since quite a few latecomers did not sign in when they arrived, we should assume that the attendance recorded in the minutes was a low count. BPE requested and secured the staff recording, which we are presenting with the timestamps of the twenty-two speaking against and the ten speaking for the ordinance. This recording is somewhat defective in that some of the public could not be audible when stating their names. However, their arguments are more clearly stated. Berkeley Public Eye's aim is to inform the public in pursuit of transparency with city plans and policies. We therefore noted the introductory statement about the inadequate city public noticing policy. The Berkeley Times is the city's choice for publishing public notices. But when a resident went to the Berkeley Public Library, no issue of the paper announcing this planning commission meeting was available.
All right, everybody. Here we are, six o'clock. And in my previous life, I was very well known for running a tight meeting and keeping things on time. So I'm sure you're all gonna help me make sure that we're out here.
Can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
No.
It's six o'clock, so we're going to start. And as I said, in a previous life, I was well-known for trying to keep a meeting running smoothly and on time, and I'm hoping that you all will help us do that tonight, since there are many people here and I'm sure most of you want to speak. So let's try and keep things moving along and we'll start then with the roll call.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Merker?
Here.
Commissioner Vincent?
Here.
Commissioner Owens?
Here.
Commissioner Oatfield?
Here.
Commissioner Khan? Chair Martinson?
Here.
Commissioner Tu?
Here.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Here.
All right, we have a more than a floor.
All right, the first item is always the land acknowledgement. Will somebody, one of the commissioners volunteer to read the land acknowledgement, please?
I believe it's real copy.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. The City of Berkeley recognizes that the community we live in was built on the territory of Puchyun, the ancestral and unceded land of the Chocheño-speaking Aloney people, the ancestors and descendants of the sovereign Verona band of Alameda County. This land was and continues to be of great importance to all the Aloney peoples and descendants of the Verona band. As we begin our meeting tonight, we acknowledge and honor the original inhabitants of Berkeley, the documented five-thousand-year history of a vibrant community at the West Berkeley Shau Mount, and the Aloney people who continue to reside in the East Bay. We recognize that Berkeley's residents have and continue to benefit from the use and occupation of this unceded stolen land since the City of Berkeley's incorporation in eighteen-seventy-eight. As stewards of the laws regulating the City of Berkeley, it's not only vital that we recognize the history of this land, but also recognize that the Aloney people are present members of Berkeley and other East Bay communities today. The City of Berkeley will continue to build relationships with the Lejeune tribe and to create meaningful actions that uphold the intention of this land acknowledgement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tu. But item number three on our agenda is public comment, and this is an opportunity for the public to make any comment on a topic not on tonight's agenda. So is there anyone? Let me see the hands of people who would like to speak on an item that is not tonight's agenda. Okay, one item, and we'll do that. You can have three minutes. And please say your name first. Thank you.
My name is Elba Longstein. I'm a chair of the Council of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Have some questions about the planning department's general public notice and procedures. Section twenty-three, four oh four, old several forty-seven, the work of the municipal BNC, said that all zoning ordinance amendments, zoning ordinance text amendments, and zoning ordinance map amendments have to be published in the newspaper or general circulation in the city at least seven days before the hearing. We have a public hearing tomorrow. Planning staff say that the notice provided at ten a.m. of the planning commission's agenda tonight appeared three times in the Berkeley Voice. I have no reason to think that wasn't the case. However, I'm assuming that's because the notice has to appear in the general circulation newspaper. The question, is the Voice a general circulation newspaper? According to California laws, any papers requiring to have quote, or both of lies and scripts a list of paid subscribers. My impression is that the Voice isn't far away. Google, uh, Google's AI says the Voice doesn't have paid subscribers, which is hallucinating. I've queried the very initial thought that not occurred back. In any case, the Voice doesn't have a website and is not parred by the Berkeley Public Library. It seems like an odd choice. At least if the goal is to ensure public notification. The BNC also said the notices had to be mailed to the central branch, the main branch, in the Berkeley Public Library. Maybe the notice for out of ten a.m. was mailed, and one day the library on the second floor of the library could find the agenda for tonight's meeting, much less the notice in the public hearing. The BNC also said that the notice shall be posted in whole city hall. The agenda for tonight's meeting is on the board in front of whole city hall. That needs to be cleared out, by the way, by page or something like that. The notice isn't. Planning Department needs to up this noticing game. For starters, please find another paper that publishes public hearing notices. Make sure the library has posted the notices if you can mail to it. And please post the notice of hearings on the board in front of whole city hall. Thank you very much.
Seeing no other public comment that's not on the agenda, we'll move on to number four, the order of the agenda, which I don't believe there are any proposals to reorder it. Okay, I don't have a chairperson's report.
Well, I'd really wanted to suggest if you wanted to move missing middle to, middle to the top, just because of what you were doing or not, but that would be your.
I thought missing.
This is the first item.
Oh, is it at the top? I don't have a report. Do any of the, is there any, uh, there's no committee reports? Are there any commissioner announcements? Commissioner announcements? Uh, staff announcements?
Just a few brief announcements that the amendments to the zoning ordinance related to miss, uh, to the middle housing, uh, subject are scheduled to be considered by council on June twenty-sixth, different from what we're hearing tonight. Um, the annual progress report on the general plan and the housing element and, uh, um, is part of your information packet. That's what was, um, submitted along with the off-agenda memo that went to council in April, and it's available online on the city's housing element and general plan websites, respectively. And what is on the horizon for July right now is one item, which is a discussion item related to implementation of SB six eighty-four.
Sorry, could you repeat that? The item in July?
Is related to the implementation of Senate Bill six eighty-four.
Okay, we next have approval of the minutes. First of all, does anyone have any comments about the minutes of last meeting?
I just wanted to point out a couple of typos in item six. Other than that, I would motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve from Jack and, uh, second from Commissioner. No. Okay, so we can call a question and vote on the approval of the minutes.
Commissioner Mather?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Oatfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Uh, Chair Martinson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
The minutes are approved.
You'll sit. Uh, okay, so we'll move on to the first, um, action and discussion item. So we're, um, we have, let's see, uh, sorry, I don't, give me a minute. Our first, uh, item is the public hearing for the amendments to the zoning map to redesignate parcel zone R one A, which is limited to family residential, to R two, to restricted to family residential. So, um, Justin, are you, do that?
Good evening, Chair Martinson, members of Planning Commission, Justin Horner, Planning Department staff. Tonight's staff is requesting you hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council on a zoning map amendment to rezone parcels currently zoned R one A to R two. This brief presentation will provide a bit of introduction and background as to the proposed zoning map amendment, and then will summarize the changes that would occur as a result of the amendment. If the proposed map amendment looks familiar, it's because, as noted in your staff report, it's part of the larger middle housing zoning changes effort, which has included zoning ordinance text amendments, a zoning map amendment, text changes to the general plan, and general plan map amendments. Tonight's action only concerns the zoning map amendment. You may recall that the city council has directed staff to consolidate zoning districts when regulatory distinctions between similar districts are minimal. Under the proposed middle housing zoning amendments, the R one A and R two zoning districts regulations would be similar enough to justify a consolidation. The Planning Commission has held a series of meetings regarding the middle housing zoning changes, where this specific map amendment was also discussed. Notably, at a public hearing on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning Commission recommended a series of zoning ordinance and general plan amendments that included the proposed zoning map amendment before you tonight. On July twenty-third of last year, the city council held a public hearing on the middle housing zoning changes, providing further direction to staff to make changes to those recommendations, although they did not provide any new direction on the map amendment. On April twenty-ninth of this year, a public hearing was scheduled for the middle housing zoning changes at the city council, but was postponed as a result of the need to properly notice this zoning map change. So this is why we are here tonight. Tonight's public hearing is to ensure proper public noticing and public participation opportunities related to this zoning map amendment. The substance of the map amendment is not new from what you've seen before. As shown in the slide, there are special requirements for zoning map amendments for areas of five acres or more that are in addition to the noticing requirements for zoning text amendments. These additional requirements, shown in bold, include an additional notice in the newspaper fourteen days before a public hearing, in addition to the required newspaper publication seven days before a public hearing, a mailing to every property owner and resident within the affected zoning districts, as well as the physical posting of public hearing notices on each street frontage within the subject areas. These additional notification steps have been taken, so therefore we can move forward with the public hearing on the zoning map amendment. All of the required notifications for the zoning text amendments, the general plan text amendments, and the general plan map amendments have occurred and were properly administered. It is the additional zoning map amendment notification requirements that are the reason for this additional public hearing. The zoning map amendment would apply to all parcels currently zoned R one A, rezoning them to R two, as shown in the map in the slide. The R one A zoning district includes three areas. One area is a collection of blocks west of San Pablo and north of university. A second area includes a collection of blocks west of San Pablo and south of university. And a third area is a collection of blocks around Hopkins, north of Gilman, near the border with the city of Albany. Before I describe the zoning map changes, I'd like to remind the Planning Commission how the zoning map change and the middle housing zoning changes are related. Under the middle housing zoning changes, not only would parcels that are currently zoned R one A be rezoned to R two, but the R two zoning standards would themselves be changed to permit more residential development. In the summary, therefore, I will be comparing the current R one A and current R two zoning districts with the proposed middle housing R two district. As you know, zoning regulates what is permitted on a particular parcel. There are four land use types that would be changed under the rezoning. These are single-family housing, multifamily housing, low-barrier navigation center, and supportive housing. For all other land uses, the permit requirements in the current R one A and the current R two are the same. In the right-hand column in pink, you see the permit requirements for each of these uses in the proposed middle housing R two zoning district. Under the proposed middle housing zoning changes, residential uses are to be permitted with a zoning certificate. The middle housing zoning changes include no other changes to permit requirements for any other land use not shown on this slide. This slide summarizes the development standards and is included in your staff report. I will not go through each development standard, but will point out that the current R one A and the current R two development standards are almost identical, except for slight differences in the maximum stories for a rear building and maximum lot coverage. The proposed middle housing standards for the R two middle housing district are shown in pink on the column on the right and reflect city council's direction to staff from their July twenty-twenty-four meeting. Thank you very much for your time and attention. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and recommend the zoning map amendment to the city council. The zoning map amendment will be considered at the same time as the middle housing zoning changes as a whole, including the zoning ordinance text amendments, general plan amendments, and general plan map amendments, at a special meeting of the city council scheduled for Thursday, June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Thank you very much, and I am available for any questions.
All right, well, let's start with any clarifying questions from the commissioners. Does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask the staff about the presentation or about the, uh, proposed changes? Okay, so then we move on to the, um, public comment. So there are a lot of people here tonight. So can I just have a hand raised to see who would like to make a comment on this item? Don't be shy. If you're really, if you're planning to speak, do it, because it will depend on how much time we allot to each speaker. So I'd really like to know about how many people are planning to speak.
About asking a question versus just a comment? Is comment covered questions too?
Yes, if you would like to say something. If you would like to say anything about this, please raise your hand. Yeah, that's quite a few people, so we're going to say that everyone will have two minutes to speak, and if you're representing an organization, you may have three minutes. And so why don't we get started and speak into the mic and remember to say your name first.
I have a quick question. Can we get the slides or are they available on the City of Berkeley website?
I'm sorry.
Are the slides that Mr. Horner just spoke on available on the City of Berkeley website?
They'll be posted on the Planning Commission after this meeting. They'll be posted.
Great, thank you. You can take mine out.
I'll be late.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Virginia Browning, and, um, I, I have no problem with just merging, uh, the two things, but my problem is with the new standards, which increases the lot coverage and density, uh, in some cases significantly, sometimes not, but sometimes yes. So the problem I have is that it's such a blanket, um, doing that it will, uh, let's say you have a ten-thousand-square-foot lot in that little house or even the duplex, and this thing about the setbacks of five feet. It, I don't see anything in there so far, um, but if there is something, I, I don't see it yet. But about protecting solar, like, um, I understand a side of that lot can step back twenty-two feet, but let's say it doesn't step back and it's, uh, you know, a three-story thing, five feet from, from a lot that has solar panels or a garden. I don't see real protection for that in there. Um, I, I don't think there's protection for adequate open space, and I don't like this new stereo, um, thing, which means that you do it without, I was gonna leave this, but I can't, it's too much. So, but also, when I was looking at it again, you know, I've read this several times, but since it's not my field, it kind of goes past me, and all I remember is, I get really upset by it, uh, because it is gonna probably affect me personally. And it, it stands in the way of my remembering details at times. So I read it overall, read it again. I, I thought, somebody gave me a formula for fifty, a maximum density of fifty units per square, whatever it is. But in the new thing that I just read tonight on there, it says sixty, sixty units. So is it fifty or sixty? And then how many bedrooms? Let's say they build a three-story, uh, nine units next to me. Can each one of those units then have nine bedrooms in it, plus two, um, addition ADUs? Uh, it seems like a lot. And, and I don't live in a single-family thing, I live in a duplex. Uh, it's all filled with people, I rent rooms. Um, it, it, you know, I, I'm fine with density, if, if there's open space, greenery, stuff like that, but this is, um, such a blanket proposal. It doesn't need room for, and it isn't, it isn't low-income housing at all. It's gonna be market-ready, it's gonna encourage the developers, the ones that built, that bought the thing down my street, work corporation, corporations, and that's how it's gonna go.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tammy Jackson, and I've been in Central Berkeley for thirty-seven years. I don't, I didn't write out my points, but I'll say that the primary, I think many people, we support the need for housing in Berkeley. We agree there needs to be more density in certain parts of Berkeley. I agree Central Berkeley is a great location for, the idea of three and four units, of three and four stories high, is just boggles my brain. It seems so much beyond the scale of what we can take. We can hardly move around in Berkeley now, as many of you know. And so to take away, I'll, Rhianna, her points, open space, the setbacks are too short, solar, the effects on the earth, it's, it's the height and the degree of density that we're opposed to. And it doesn't seem like there's any consideration about affordability. So it's been marketed as though somehow this is a plan that will make it more equitable for people of color that have been displaced. No studies, in fact, have shown anything like that, or that market housing is going to improve the situation for people that have been previously displaced in Berkeley to come back. So, and, and there's nothing in there that says, no, this can't be student housing. There's other options for students. So I'm just, the level of it, and so I, I hear the gentleman who said, everybody was informed at every time. As a citizen, resident in Central Berkeley, we never got anything in the mail, we never got email. And my last, the, the first, um, big town hall that got quite contentious because somebody behaved really badly, I wanna miss, correct a misperception. People were really upset in that meeting. Yes, somebody very much disbehaved, because it was presented to us, here's our done deal, come to the back of the room and look at the plans. And that's why there was uproar in that room, because it felt like, we're done with this. So my last ten seconds is about the vision for Berkeley in twenty or thirty years. Like, what, what, what developer's dream is this? Who's gonna make all this money from all these projects that you're putting up all the time?
Ready?
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Clifford Perez. When I, I was on the Planning Commission thirty years ago. When I bought my house in Veralta forty-eight years ago, it was R one A. The R one A has served us well for fifty years. Everybody, in fact, could do what they wanted. The Jones Project on San Pablo and Tenth, under the R one A, they've got this wall, three-story building stretching from Cedar all the way to Page, I believe is the next block. People have been able to do plenty under the R one A. This seems gratuitous, on top of everything else you're doing to our neighborhood, the pickleball, the San Pablo Avenue up, upzoning, the Tickenway parking on the Hopkins, Tickenway parking on the Aloney Plan, a new high-rise approved every, every week in Berkeley, the twenty-eight-story McDonald's high-rise approved by the council last night. Several weeks ago, the seventeen-story high-rise approved on Shattuck, knocking down the classic University of Arts Theater, twenty-five stories on Shattuck, twenty-six stories on Austin Way, a new high-rise every week approved in Berkeley, all apartments, and they're not getting built. They're sitting vacant. They bulldoze buildings, they bulldoze buildings that sits vacant. Uh, Polay, which has been at Shattuck in Virginia forty-three years, is being kicked out by another high-rise after forty-three years, they're going out of business. So this is gratuitous, if you have to consolidate, make R one A, R one, give us R one. If it's good enough for the hills, if it's good enough for the San Pablo Park neighborhood, if it's good enough for the neighborhood, it's good enough for us. We need the protection of R one. Our areas have been targeted with more and more development, yet you're taking away hundreds of parking spaces with the state mandated deadline, uh, what's it called? Daylighting? You're taking away parking with the bicycle tracks. Give us R one. Single-family zoning doesn't exist anymore anyway because of SP thirty-five. We've got SP seventy-nine beating the track.
Finish your sentence.
Give us R one. Thank you.
Before you start, I'd like to ask people that want to speak to get a little closer to the mic so we can move everybody along a little more quickly. Thank you. Go for it.
Hi, my name is Zanisha Alma. I've had, um, I am a Berkeley, West Berkeley, uh, city resident for the past fifteen years. I had a master's degree, um, in environmental management from the Yale School of Barstool and Environmental Studies, now the Yale School of Environment. Um, and I also am an investigator, um, and a longtime energy efficiency policymaker with the California public health administration. Anyone who understands how environmental sustainability and ecology work can tell you that thoughtful planning and connectivity are critical to environmental sustainability and ecological health, help. The same principles that are true for the environment are true for human communities as well. The City of Berkeley's middle housing proposal marks directly counter to these principles. The Middle Housing Plan proposes that the City of Berkeley abandon its responsibility to thoughtfully plan sustainable housing that supports Berkeley's family and to the environment, and hand over the future of Berkeley's development to a tiny group of wealthy investors who can develop within the R two zone, R two. This is akin to inviting sharks to watch over the ecologically fragile coastal salmon populations instead of doing the currently, what is currently in place, which has having laws that, um, support sustainable fishing. Anyone who shouts atheism in the face of this proposal is either in the pockets of private developers or don't have a sound foundation in environmental and community play. I'm opposed to the middle housing plan, and I, I hope that you listen to our voices. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bridget Shank. I'm an architect who's been practicing Berkeley for a while. I live here, I'm a homeowner, and I'm also a developer, small, local, women-owned developer. I know what it's like to get permits here, I know what it's like to build, and I support this bill wholeheartedly. I think we need more housing, I think this is getting us there. I have one small point that I think the commission should consider, which is that currently, if you have an R one zone and you fall under SP ninety, the state bill, there's a part of the demolition ordinance that allows a one-for-one replacement. This is, of course, you know, if there's no protective tents. So once there's no protective tents, you're allowing one-for-one replacement. The way the current proposal is written, there has to be a two-for-one replacement, an increase in density. And I actually think we should be supporting housing at all levels, including single-family homes. Occasionally, it's more appropriate for a particular homeowner. And so I think that the language should be changed to be, uh, as much or increased density, and not require increased density in order to have the administrative approval. Because the AUP is a very honorized process, it's expensive, and it's long, and it's cumbersome on the homeowner. Because the AUP is a very ownerized process, it's expensive, and it's long, and it's cumbersome on the homeowner. Thank you.
Where's our next person?
My name is Daniel Wardishin, Berkeley resident for about fifty years. And I really appreciate that people have been saying, and I feel like this middle housing thing is something that's been forced upon us for the benefit of developers. Now, there should be periods where people, where people can speak, like the speaking tonight. I'd like to know what people, my neighbors, what other residents of Berkeley feel about this. And I think these, there should be a series of common halls, and they should be, and with people speaking, and they should be recorded. And by the way, it's, I wonder if this one tonight, people before, speaking before, they just said very valuable things, very good things. And they should, and this meeting too should be recorded and be available for people to go online and listen to my people upstairs. I would like to, I would like to go over that, thank you.
Look, you and Clifford, I live on Ward Street there, the apartment. I'm an owner of a property with two units, a front house and a back. Both houses are two-story, together they're twenty-six hundred square feet. My understanding of living in R2 zoning would be that up to nine thousand square feet of building could go into that lot, up to six units. So, my basic premise is two, or more than two. A, I'm altering the density to some extent in Berkeley, throughout Berkeley. Secondly, I think it needs to be done in a way that it more or less fits with the feel of the neighborhood. And so going from, in my case, twenty-six hundred square feet for two units, to allowing nine thousand square feet would be a three-minute increase, particularly with the third story condition, I think that's too big a jump for a neighborhood that primarily feels like it's two-story homes. And there are two small apartment buildings on the block, it's not that there aren't any. But I think this is too dramatic an increase. And somehow, a person gets happy about square feet and lot coverage. There needs to be some sense of the aesthetic of new stuff that goes in, so that it's not jarring. Quite frankly, I can see three or four, Mungolo, single-story type properties on our block that happen to be owned by a very well-known landlord. And I'm sure those will be the first properties that are guaranteed to nine thousand square feet of apartments. And it's going to totally change the nature of the neighborhood. And that's my concern. I think there's eighty-five thousand square feet of building is enough for my kind of block. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Stacey Nelson-Ski. I've been in a one-story house with two neighbors, also in one-story houses. I would like not to have a two- or three- or four-story house next to me, which is classic, not in my backyard. But we need to increase density, reduce urban sprawl, strive to reduce cost of housing, and do this by increasing density. Urban planning isn't about me, it's about the general good.
I'm David White, and I live down the street from Clifford in Peralta. I got this in the mail, and started to look at it, and it looked like a little puzzle. And the real puzzle is, why is this little triangle hard math? You've got a bunch of stuff below San Pablo on the east side of University. And then you've got this little thing that runs along the creek, is the edge of Albany, you'll find those. And as far as I can tell, it's not because we're going to sell the housing price, but it's like, we all got to suffer. And if you're R1A, you got to be R2 like everybody else. My house was built nineteen oh six, probably right after the earthquake. The house right next to me was built by nineteen oh six as well. When the sun goes down in the middle of December, the shadow comes right to the edge of your window that I call the sunroom. Three stories wipes out the sunroom. Don't think about planting flowers or even trees, if you've got this amount of stuff, it's total change. When I came to Berkeley, the big deal in land use was to get rid of the techy-cack apartments that were taking over Berkeley. And that's why we still have a Berkeley that feels like a home that should already be in, rather than some little square Lego that you live in. It's okay for university, but it's not something you can impose on the entire area of Berkeley, including this little triangle that I have.
Quick interjection, I apologize, but I seem to remember that we have an obligation to do just one minute of comment if we have over ten commentators. Is that anybody else's right obligation, or could staff give us some guidance? I just fear, I might have seen a couple of people leave, I don't want to lose people who can't wait this long to comment.
It's more the discretion of the chair, our practice is three for individuals and five for organizations. It's discretion of the chair when there is more people to adjust accordingly.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Can you pick up, please, so we can hear in the back?
Yeah.
We were talking about the time limit for the public comment. But that's why I'm asking everybody to try and move quickly to the microphone, because we have a lot of people who want to speak, and every five seconds that it takes to kind of move yourself to the microphone makes it take longer. So I prefer to give people more time to speak and less time for transition. So I don't want to abruptly change to one minutes, but if we don't move things along, we're going to have to do that. So please, get to the microphone as soon as the previous speaker is finished. That gives everybody a chance to get their two minutes in. Go for it.
Okay, hi. My name is Yvonne Davidak, I'm a UC Berkeley graduate student, I'm studying chemistry, I'm a chemistry professor. I just wanted to speak out in support of this proposal. I live in a small apartment building in North Berkeley. It's in a pretty residential area, lots of houses nearby, some other prime buildings. And I think it's really great, actually, I think it's cool that we can have lots of different density housing in one area. I honestly love living in Berkeley. I've lived in Davis, Sacramento, Monterey, San Jose, and I think Berkeley is my favorite city I've lived in so far. It's bikeable, it's walkable, and I think it's awesome that it's relatively affordable compared to the rest of the Bay Area. Yeah, I think we should have more housing in Berkeley, so a lot more people can live here. It's a really nice place to live, and fifty thousand students do live here, so that's like our next half of the population of Berkeley. They need housing too. And I think this proposing allows more housing to be built, more housing needs cheaper housing. Yeah, that's it.
Come on.
Hi, Zach West, I've lived in Berkeley for well over a decade. And I live in one of those small, six-unit, eight-bedroom apartments. It's quite a comfortable place to live. I support the construction of more things like it. I, you know, of course, there's two and four, like, R2 doesn't necessarily allow that. But yeah, I support the map, and I appreciate the work that staff has done to put it together. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Donna DiMarra, and I'm representing Build Better Berkeley, a recently formed group that sprung up from the frustration of the lack of transparency of this rezoning process. Since Sunday, almost six hundred people have joined our cause. Most council members have declared that there have been enough ways for people to become informed about the zoning upgrade, and they point to the many commission and council meetings as proof. I attended the October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four commission meeting where the middle housing recommendation for the staff was moved forward. I did not recall coming away fully informed, so I watched the Berkeley Public Eye video of that meeting today. It was clearly, it clearly looked more like a work session than a decision-making session. Commission members, who are the experts, appeared confused and were questioning of what they were looking at. Toward the end of the meeting, two commissioners declared that they would be abstaining from voting because they felt public concerns hadn't been addressed, and there hadn't been enough input. And when calling for the vote, Acting Chair Vernoli Goesch said, this is a quote, "I might share some of the anxieties because we are making a lot of assumptions, but until we do, we don't know. We have to give it a little room and see." So the idea was to pass something and then see how it played itself out. This is an example of what council was saying has been full and thorough process by which the public should have been, become informed. I can attest from the many comments Build Better Berkeley has received from the public that it did not. In addition, the letters in the commission packet indicate that members of the public don't think they've had a chance to weigh in on the pros and cons of the proposed change of R1A to R2. So regarding item ten, please don't take the do-it-now-and-wait-to-see-how-it-plays-out approach that was put forth by ex-commission Goesch. First residents deserve better than that.
So the rationale for merging R1A and R2 is a similarity in zoning.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I can't, no. It's a similarity of zoning regulations. But in reality, what the majority of R1A and R2 zoning have in common is that they're residential, low-density, single-family home parcels. Now, the city of Berkeley made a big show of saying that they wanted to get rid of single-family zoning because it's inequitous. But the reality is that, the following. The state of California has created a series of laws that are designed to help homeowners and small-scale developers densify their parcels in an organic way. The first one is the ADU regulations. The city of Berkeley is already not following the legal requirements, as you can see in another packet for tonight. The second one is SB nine regulations. SB nine regulations allow the splitting of single-family zoning parcels and the building of two units on each of these split parcels, creating a possibility for a mix of unit sizes up to four per existing parcel. Yet again, the city of Berkeley is refusing to apply the SB nine regulations to R1A zone properties and R2 zone properties, even though the very essence of these properties is that they are single-family parcels. The question is not whether Berkeley is going to densify because the state of California has already created the framework for this to happen. The question is who is going to be behind this process and how it's going to happen. Either it's going to be organically, led by the local residents at the scales of the people who can accommodate with things like ADUs and SB nine applied regulations, or run by a small group of connected developers who get to set the standards they want the building to build housing according to. And if this commission can show that there's a market demand for a large quantity of smaller block area apartments for rent, and that is not for sale, it is for rent, then go ahead, but that's not the case.
Hi, my name is Mira, and I'm co-founder of a group called Beautiful San Pablo. I just wanted to say a few things. First of all, those of us who live close to transability and food development are already experiencing densification. And then now they're saying, in D1, in that section that we saw, R1A that is going to be rezoned, and it's going to be bought up by developers very quickly, and it's going to be super dense. So what I'm thinking about the Berkeley New York School of Street Housing is going to be one hundred houses. The North Berkeley Bar Tower for the unhoused people is going to go up first, and that's going to be eight hundred minutes deeper. So we are going to be super dense in that area. Can we think about this? That what you're suggesting tonight does not happen, and that you entertain the notion that the missing middle will happen east of Sacramento, east of Sacramento. In other words, are properties that are not going to go for cheap, that won't be quickly gentrified. I've been around, canvassing my neighbors, we are a diverse community. We have, there are several units on one lot already, and people who are not able to afford other housing can live in D1. What you're planning to do will change that. And I also ask you to think about what makes Berkeley Berkeley. It is the open space, it is the flower and fauna and native plants. We are not some other city, we are here, Berkeley, and this zoning will not show who we are. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Chow, and I live in the Westbury area on Curtis Street. And I just got this some within the last week, and I really didn't understand it. And like, I didn't know if it could really apply to me or my block, because there are no street names on it. There, I mean, you can't tell who it's really impacting, because it's so small, it doesn't say street names. So what I'm up here to talk about is that there's no real information here that you gave out to the residents. You did not clarify what was really going on. And so here we are, and I think the council is planning to vote on this, either this one or next one. You're rushing it. And I'm really distressed by the fact that we are being railroaded here into this new zoning situation without any real information, without real input from us. And I'm really afraid that, okay, all these people who wanted to come and live in our beautiful little city that's so cozy and quaint and very cool, it's not going to be with all these big high-rise monsters that have been already created here. And I think that the city needs to really do an analysis with all the new housing that has already been put up. What, how much has been done, and are they really filled? And how many people are still not being able to live in them? Okay, so, I don't think this is the solution to this lack of housing here, because Berkeley has gotten a lot of new apartments. And I don't think the residents here are even happy with that. Okay, thank you very much, I hope you will reconsider the process, have more community input, and not just say, oh, we told you so already, if you missed, you need it. But, huh, bye. Thank you.
I'm Mrs. Heather Hertz, I've lived on a block on 10th Street in West Berkeley for forty-eight years. I am really appreciative of my experience. I've really appreciated the neighborhood. It's a very integrated neighborhood, and it's a neighborhood that has backyards and trees, and our children have been raised in gardens, and we have had vegetable gardens. I have a cottage in the back of my house. And on one side, I have six units, and I can tell you that it's a lot of noise, and it takes a lot of light away. On the other hand, on the other side, I have only one house. If that one house becomes, you know, four, or seven, or nine units, the light will be gone from my house and my cottage. The vegetable garden will be gone because there's no light. And I think it's a developer's dream. No young family is going to be able to buy that lot next door when it comes up for sale next time, because developers are going to be able to offer much more money, not that they can create so many units that they can rent out. So we're really driving out families from Berkeley by doing this kind of ordinance. And I think it's a major mistake, and public input has not been had. I was also at that October meeting that Rushi called, it was a farce. We were basically told to listen to what the department had to say, there was no space for input. And I think this is, as many people said, completely rushed and not thought through, and I don't think the people of Berkeley have been heard on this. The high density should happen on the major corridors and downtown, as some of that has happened. But it should not happen in the neighborhoods and destroy the Berkeley that we love, no, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ajir Mahmood, I live in the Westbury neighborhood. So my family and I moved into this neighborhood, into Berkeley for the first time about ten years ago. First home we bought, two little kids. So I very much appreciate the idea and concept of affordability and density. And we need to think about these things when we look at the next generation. Families that were in our situation ten years ago, they need to come in and have an opportunity to own. they need to come in and have an opportunity to own their home and to raise their families in this incredible city that we all call home. I do have a lot of issues with the proposed changes because while we need density, we need affordable housing. I think this is rushed. This is extreme. This is going from an idea into an explosion of incredible high density and the only people that will benefit from this, when you look at the setbacks, when you look at the height allowances, when you look at the entire process, are developers who will come in and build large, monstrous homes, completely change the look, the feel, the charm, the neighborhood atmosphere without regard, without consideration for the communities in which we all reside. We are investing by not just buying properties here, but investing in the communities and our neighborhoods. And you are going to destroy that with this process. There is a way to make this happen that is not as extreme and drastic as the current proposal. So I have huge issues with the way this is done, the way that it has been rolled out. The first time we heard about this was the notice we got for R1A to R2 a week ago posted in front of our house. Where's the news? Where's, let me, frankly, voice, someone mentioned this earlier. I have to Google that because I've never even heard of that newspaper. So let's go back, find a solution that is workable, that considers our neighborhoods, our communities, where we all live and we want to welcome others. But let's do it in a way that doesn't ruin the neighborhood's experience.
Good evening, commissioners, how about the District 5? I'm against this ordinance because it does not require more affordable housing than what our current ordinance has. You know, this is just a free-for-all. Further gentrification of the southern and western parts of Berkeley. The Rent Board, two years ago, I believe, put out a report talking about the gentrification in the flats of Berkeley. You know, that we've lost huge numbers of our African-American community, huge numbers of our Latino community. This is further gentrifying Berkeley. You know, talk about, you know, we already have the ADU ordinance and we see ADUs going up everywhere. My neighborhood in North Berkeley, I've seen a lot of ADUs. And really nice, I really agree. If Raji has turned it into a two-floor building, very nice, very nice. But also, it's not, doesn't mean that these ADUs are affordable. And on Nextdoor this week, a lady was asking about her 350-square-foot ADU had high-end appliances, good for her. She wanted $2,700 for this tiny space. That's not affordable. And then she goes to someone, people commenting about how not affordable that is. All of these new buildings that are coming in will come in with no tenant protections, no support. And they will be very expensive, again, further gentrifying our beloved Berkeley. Please, please, commissioners, I know that you're here representing the city council members at all points of view. Please listen to the community. We've been screaming about this variation for a long time. And others choose to, and we're not being heard. So we're asking you to please listen. Also, I wanted to just let people know that the Berkeley Neighborhood Council will be having a town hall on Little Housing Ordinance on Thursday, June 12th, at the Everlobbets campus from 6:30 to 8:30. The commission declined to come. So we invite all of you to come to this meeting. Thank you.
Can I add a question about how many people still would like to speak on this topic? Just so I get a sense of-- Okay, all right.
Hi, I'm Heather Schlein. I'm a resident, I'm a homeowner, I'm in the Bronx, I'm a resident in Berkeley. I also work for a nonprofit developer. I build affordable housing for folks who experience homelessness, provide affordable housing in some navigation centers and stuff like that. So I have a variety of perspectives on this housing issue. Speaking solidly at first, as a single-family homeowner, I'm a part of lots of pretty small square footage. It's a very small, very old house. I live, I have two kids, a few more in there. I love, I love my neighborhood. I would love to stay there and to do some pretty straightforward improvements in my own home. I, just with what I can afford, I will, I've been about construction costs just to add on some minimal square footage, get another bedroom and improve my, another bedroom and a bathroom. I can't quite fit it on my lot without the setback increases. I've limited in what I can do to just do a single-story addition to my own home. So I think that's just one example. Also, just working on some neighbors' properties and going through, you know, single-family residential folks who are trying to do small upgrades to make your own home more livable. You know, just adding a little bit of square footage. The process is very cumbersome, the administrative use for, bringing small additions, even, you know, small, anything more than like a small shed, like 100 square feet, you have to go through the administrative use process. It's like, it's a lot of time and expense for those who have to pay designer to, you will not work for them. So I think there's a lot of really straightforward changes that make a lot of sense, setbacks, zoning certificate approvals. So I, I think--
Finish your sentence.
Sure. I love what I could say, but we'll do that.
I really mean it. I want to, there's a lot of people that would like to have their two minutes and the longer we spend walking to the microphone, the more likely we are to have to cut everybody to one minute. So stay close to the microphone if you're next.
Hi, yes, thank you for the chance to speak today. I just want to say thank you again to the staff. They've been, I think, almost two years, maybe over two years of work on this at this point. I'm talking to the community, a lot of consultation, a lot of work putting it out here. And so I appreciate that and I'm glad that we can finally sort of get this eventually back to council. As a homeowner in Berkeley and a parent of kid kids, I would love for my kids to be able to live in Berkeley. But as we've seen over the last 30, 40 years, we've had a lot of work, the people have mentioned this, communities and all the work that people have done in Berkeley. And so this is one great step to start reversing that. And some of the things we can do is, as I, I think I mentioned in the previous comment, is continue to deliver things that are honest to people who are homeowners in Berkeley, to be able to understand how easy or how difficult it may be to do something, even if it ain't started. And so I think this is a great step and hopefully we can finally get to it. And I'll just mention again too that in general, you shouldn't really listen to anyone of us in this room. We're brief people who are willing to show up on Wednesday at dinnertime to talk about this. You should be using your expertise and listening to council members, to committees, and listening to people in Berkeley and in other neighborhoods. Thank you.
Good morning, you know my name, Zell Thompson.
Can you hear you?
Zell Thompson, again. Yesterday morning, Plaid Commissioners received a letter from Attorney Tom Wookie, representing Dean Metzger and myself. Letter states, item 10 and tonight's agenda and the notice for the accompanying public hearing are legally defective because they are substantively misleading, close quote. To correct this defect, we ask you to continue the hearing on item pending to a future meeting and provide timely, meaningful notice pursuant to the Brooklyn Municipal Code adequately describing the item of business in both the notices and the agenda opposed to that meeting. What's misleading about the public hearing notice? It says nothing about allowed uses and development standards. What's also misleading is what the notice and the staff report do say. The council has decided to consolidate zoning districts when regulatory distinctions between similar districts, in this case, R1A and R2, are visible. Excuse me. The regulatory distinctions between current R1A and current R2 are not visible. They are significant. The notice also doesn't say that under the middle housing plan, the allowed uses and development standards for R2 are also being changed and that the distinctions between current R1A and middle housing R2 are minimal. You can see the discrepancies in the staff report. For Table 1, allowed use. Current R1A does not permit middle multifamily housing. New or middle housing R2 does, with a zoning certificate, which means no public hearing. Current R1A, uh, uh, from Table 2, development standards summary. The height limit in current R1A is two stories. In new or middle housing R2 is three stories. The minimum setbacks in current R1A are 20 feet on the rear and inside. In new or middle housing R2, they are five feet. Front and rear combined must be at least 20 feet. The maximum density, residential density per lot in current R1A is two units. In new or middle housing R2 is 50 units. And yes, 60--
Thank you, thank you. Finish your sentence, please.
Please continue for standing commission.
The next, the next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Amelia Archer. I grew up in Berkeley and, you know, a lot of the people I grew up with, my friends now cannot afford to live here. So, you know, what makes Berkeley Berkeley? People are talking about the open space and all of these things. But I think what makes Berkeley Berkeley is a sphere of openness, community and creativity and, you know, being a welcoming place. So I do actually live in a single-family home in Berkeley. It's in a, you know, a mixed neighborhood with some small apartment buildings. I would love to see more apartment buildings in my neighborhood. And I think that Berkeley would really benefit from having the option to add that, you know, and have this sort of picture of neighborhood and a mixture of people. And I would also like to say that having more density in Berkeley and allowing people to, you know, walk and bike and take more transit is a really important thing we can do for having our city be an environmentally friendly city. So, yeah, I wanted to thank the staff for their work on this and that I support this reselling. Thanks.
Good evening, Plaid Commission staff and friends. My name is Tony Mester. I've lived in the R1A since 1979 and I stand here before you as the embodiment of the missing middle. I am clearly in the middle of this controversy. On one hand, I really do support increasing housing opportunities in Berkeley. We need it. And most of you probably don't know this, but I had a instrumental part in the ADU explosion. And I can explain to you privately about that. But I worked with the ADU task force and did the political work to get that through. On the other hand, the standards that are being proposed are not really very good. The lot coverage is too large, the setbacks are too small, and nobody understands how to calculate 50 units per acre. I've had to explain to people and show them how to do it. And I think the property owners have a right to know what can be built on what they own and what can be built on the lots next door. That is a basic property right. If you don't understand the zoning, you shouldn't go through. Now, there is an elephant in the room or a gorilla in the closet, whatever you want to call it, but it is the density bonus. And we have not gotten a straight answer about whether or not the density bonus will apply. And because of the density bonus, I believe that the main building should be held down to four units. Plus, you have two ADUs that give you six units and that's plenty of increased housing in Berkeley.
Hello, my name is Angelina Corte Menco and I'm from East Bay Housing Organization. We're also known as EPO. And we are a membership organization of over 400 individual and organizational members advocating to produce, preserve, and protect affordable housing opportunities for low-income communities in the East Bay. EPO supports the staff recommendation for zoning changes to encourage middle housing. Making these changes is actually required in order to implement Program 29 of Berkeley's housing element. Holding the existing R1 zoning district into the R2 district and creating the new and new R2 zoning district is also a way to increase residential development capacity that includes common sense maximum density limits. This gentle rezoning addresses Berkeley's need for additional housing options for the full range of incomes that are here in Berkeley. And it includes opportunities for small-site affordable housing such as community land trusts. It is also a symbolic step towards redressing the harm that was caused by Berkeley by pioneering single-family zoning 100 years ago in an explicit effort to exclude people of color from housing opportunities and new developments in the neighborhoods in the city. A strong ordinance with densities that are sufficient to encourage additional housing is important to address Berkeley's historical responsibilities and current needs. And EPO is excited to see this move forward and we look forward to working with the city council and the city staff to ensure successful implementation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Bell and I live in D1. In fact, I live in one of those new buildings on San Pablo. And I was going to talk about this, but I actually wound up in one of those buildings when my landlord didn't own or move in on me during the pandemic. I'm so grateful to have a place to live there, as is each and every one of my neighbors. Nurses, students, teachers, nonprofit workers, retirees moving to be closer to their grandkids. Every single neighbor of mine has their own story of how the existence of this building really improved their lives, our lives. I'm so freaking glad that my homeowners, they are too. And so we need to keep this in mind, that every time we create an opportunity to build in Berkeley, we are greatly improving somebody's life, a family, an individual. This is not about the developers. This is about the humans who live in those homes. Now, I'd also like to point out that if you take a walk around Berkeley, something I'm admittedly not going to tell you right now. Can you tell where R1A ends and R2 begins? Because I can't. But most of all, I'd like to point out that Berkeley is the birthplace of single-family zoning in America. And we know that it's actually the birthplace of single-family zoning because the owner was wanting to keep out an African-American dance hall.
That's not true!
It was explicitly racist--
Shall I, no, no, please, 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 let her finish.
It is certainly explicitly racist intent. How do we undo the racism of our past? By the way, I'm saying KQD. I hope people trust KQD. The way we undo the racism of our past is we bring equity across our neighborhoods. We, the more homes we build, the more affordable they will be. If we allow for density bonuses, that makes space for other buildings. Anyway, I'm sorry, I'm getting distracted by the farce. But the point is, the way to bring equity--
Finish your sentence, please.
--is to consolidate zones, allow for middle housing, move this along and make the space for people to live in Berkeley across the street. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joel Meyerson. Joel Meyerson, and I'm a member of Build Better Berkeley. And well, one of the housing priorities, one of the needs that I went to the board is a public hearing about what's going to happen. There was a lot of people who were upset. They were complaining about this and complaining about that. And the answer that we got from the city was, what's everybody so concerned about? This isn't going to happen very quickly. So it's like, what's the big rush, folks? You know, if it's not going to happen very quickly, take a break. Don't rush into this. It's not going to happen very quickly. Why is everyone so concerned about passing it so quickly? That's one thing. And I have a short, it's a technical question, which I have not been able to find the answer for. And it has to do with the density calculations. I know that the density for, say, a 5,000-square-foot lot on a new proposal would be five to seven units depending on where you are or how big it is or whatever. So my question is, how do you handle fractional numbers? Other words, how is it rounded in that calculation? You calculate to 5.1, is it six or is it five? Does anyone know the answer to that question that they can tell me?
I don't think we can answer questions during public comment. Is that correct?
Right. I know the answer, I can tell you.
Maybe you want to entertain it after the comments.
Yeah, okay, after the, after public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Judy Jones and I'm a third-generation Berkeley in the Oceanview area. I came to speak to the specific concerns of the African-American community, my neighbors. And I wanted to share with you, I appreciate your prominence regarding people of color. But as a person of pride here in Berkeley for three generations, there's a lot of history that I will not share because we don't have time. But there are three things I need to bring to your attention. One, we are concerned about the infrastructure. With all of this building, have you considered the sewers? Linda Vail, a former councilwoman for District 1, was working on sewers in District 1. She had planned for that. You know why? There are a number of 100-year-old clay-- There are a number of 100-year-old clay main sewers in Districts 1, 2, and 3. While I understand and I'm all for housing, I am a small property owner of duplex. But in the district and the map that you have, we're concerned about sewers. All the buildings, what about the infrastructure? You know, 24/7, 365, when a main line breaks, what's your plan? The reason why I say that is because we've already had incidents in the past where Linda Mayo addressed them. Kindly refer to her and she will share with you what her plan was at that time. That's a practical concern that we all need to keep in mind when you talk about density and where housing is built. The second concern that I have is about the map. I would like to commend the speaker earlier who talked about Curtis Avenue. Um, one of the things that I had concern for the map, it should be citywide, not just that map. Otherwise, it gives a misleading impression of where I almost finished, I almost finished. It should be across the city. When I look at maps, it should have the name of the street and when we're talking about this, it should be across the city. So please keep that in mind.
Thank you.
My name is Charlie Woodcock. I've lived in Berkeley for 50 years or so. Uh, I live in North Side in a duplex. Every building, unlike the lot except one, is multifamily. Even duplexes, mostly fourplexes and so forth. Um, when you look around Berkeley, there are a lot of 600 apartments all over the place. Berkeley has been a dense place for a long time. What draws people to Berkeley or did in the past is this wonderful diversity, this cultural diversity and this economic diversity, racial, ethnic diversity that's being thrown away by giving over to developers and shaping the future of our city because they are motivated by profit. The only way we can get what we want in Berkeley, which is housing for middle and lower-income people and families, the only way we can get that really is with nonprofit developers. The, the little tiny percentage of low-income housing that goes into some of these buildings and the absurdly low moving that developers pay to avoid that even small percentage are absurd. If our city council really cared about providing the housing we need, it's affordable housing and that's not what we get from for-profit developers.
I just have a couple of things to say. My name is Beverlyne Colson. I've been in your position years and years, lifetimes ago and in others as well. Um, there are a couple of things. I'm here, number one, to support no changes to the R1A. Uh, there is absolutely no reason to make the changes that are proposed are drastic for our area, for our, more than my small neighborhood. And I think you've heard people who live in my neighborhood already. I have a couple of questions. One is, um, you want to keep the point of this and the housing element, if you want to keep it simple. Um, one of the simple things that I read was that one will have no opportunity to voice his or her concerns about your development or whatever goes in next door or down the street because if it fits the criteria, that's it. But the people who make the proposal have to speak, have to talk to people, they have to notify the people on either side as I read what came in the mail. Um, what does it matter? If somebody's coming in and doing whatever he or she wants on a piece of property and you notify the people next door when there's not a thing that they can do about it? We are used to having the right to say something about what's going in around our neighborhood and supporting a lot of it and pointing young problems to some of the others and opposing some of them. There's no way to say anything given this proposal and I think we need to slow down. We are used to being a community where people participate and talk about what kind of neighborhood they want and what they want to keep. It's important, there's nothing wrong with it and it should still be in there. There are a lot of other problems. I support people here who say, slow down, but build a better Berkeley.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please don't do anything tonight.
Hi, I'm Jessie. I'm a new homeowner in Berkeley. I just moved here in October, really exciting. Um, I'm in the West Bray where I can walk to more grocery stores than I ever have in my entire life. Um, and I'm really excited about the census proposal and the idea that more people could walk to more grocery stores than they ever have in their entire life. And I like the idea that we can potentially build more housing so that my children can come close to me. Thanks.
Let's be quick, Kelly Hammergren. Um, the thing about planning and doing this zoning change is it always feels like we're doing this piecemeal, one little piece at a time rather than having a plan for the city. And as much as I have anxiety about that, I wish we did. Uh, because as we're increasing density, we're also not looking at having more open space, having more parks and planting for trees. So those are all a concern about how we're going to, um, have a sustainable city, have open space and increased density. And to the lady who spoke about sewers, I think you should all pick up Hope Jared's book, The Story of More. She's got a chapter on sewers in there, which is absolutely hysterical, which you should read, uh, as it impacts, um, the common value. Thank you.
Okay, see that sign that says exit? Would the next speakers please stand at that sign so they are near the microphone? Yes. See that sign right there? That's where the next speaker should be. Like, it's like the bat, you know, the batter getting ready to bat.
You're on deck. You're on deck.
All right, uh, my name is Jeff Baker. I live here and I have two kids in DHS. I've been telling them their entire lives that we're going to have this housing crisis thing wait by the time they grow up, but they're teenagers now and it's not looking very good. Uh, we live in a duplex that I rent. My landlord knows that nobody can build a multifamily dwelling in the R1 zone or the R1A zone. And every year when it's time to do the lease, they've gotten over a barrel because where am I going to go? And that is the big problem with R1. It is a zone where we don't allow people to build multifamily dwellings, which is a moral abomination in the year 2025. And we've heard all kinds of crazy stuff from people who are badly out of touch with the housing market in Berkeley this year. Small houses in West Berkeley are not naturally affordable housing that young families can just pick up and buy. It costs a thousand, no one's just worth a foot to buy those houses. Nobody can afford it. And the idea that evil developers are going to swoop in and buy everybody's house, suddenly if we merge R1A and R2 is obviously not going to happen. And by the way, I am trying to keep it on topic with what's actually going to begin tonight, which is to merge R1A with R2. It has nothing to do with the thing we're going to talk about in two weeks. Anyway, if I sound like I'm getting angry, that's because I don't want to be one of those old Berkeley people whose kids live in Texas. I would really like my kids to keep living there where we've lived here all our lives. Uh, furthermore, we promise to do this change in our housing elements, which is a duly adopted contract between Berkeley and the state of California. Then we had a election where everybody who supports this was either elected or re-elected by a gigantic margin. So let's just get this done and put it on ice.
I'm Anthony S. Lawrence. I live on Cedar Street, an architect, uh, I've worked in Berkeley for years, um, and I don't think that necessarily evil, uh, developers, but developers look at numbers, so let's look at numbers. And so I think the problem that's been ignored in this or underestimated are the potential cumulative effects. So there's an increase to 60% lot coverage, but there's also ever-expanding ADU propositions. I'm in favor of, of, um, of middle housing. Don't get me wrong, it's just are we overshooting the goal here and what are the externalities and unintended consequences? So let's look at the cumulative effect of potentially state density bonus coming. And Justin Holland and I had conversations about it and said, oh, no, that's never going to happen, it's not happening now, three or four or five. Yeah, but let's look in the rearview mirror because, you know, those districts have lower lot coverages, they're around 45% depending on height and whatnot, but they're significantly lower. So we really can't look in the rearview mirror, we have to look at what are the potential cumulative effects now. Those are the ones with state density problems with, you know, where you could have up to 50% increase, so suddenly 9,000 square feet goes to 30,500, six units go to nine, three stories go to four or five, and then you can pile the ADUs on top of it and, you know, in certain instances up to eight ADUs. But ADUs are exempt from lot coverage if they are up to 800 square feet. So the real portion of the property, you can always have two ADUs, there's two units 600 square feet. So I think all of this has to be looked at much more carefully. And so I think, in summary, I think the current proposal is too aggressive, it ignores compounding effects and unintended consequences with negative externalities that really need to be studied much more closely. And I have sympathy for everybody stating out that, you know, like, you know, creating new units, of course, the answer is not no middle housing, but a more moderate approach that actually works and looks at all these compounding effects.
Finish your sentence, please. Finish your sentence. Thank you. And since no one, since no one is on deck, I'm assuming that you have no more speakers. This is your last chance. All right, I want to close public comment and I want to thank everyone who's listened and who has spoken tonight to help us understand what the, um, what your ideas are about the item. I want to start with asking Justin to, uh, answer the question about the calculation that the, one of the speakers asked. You said you would do it after public comment.
Oh, sure. Um, under the Berkeley Municipal Code, you, for a market rate unit, you round to the nearest whole number, so you go down if it's 0.5 or above if it's 0.5. For affordable housing unit calculation, however, we always round up even with the nearest fraction to maximize the amount of floor面积.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so what we're going to do is we're going to have the commissioners, uh, comment on the item and the comments and I think I'll ask, since it has taken a while to go through public comment, or the commissioners also to try and be as concise as possible, we'll go through one time, one round, and then we'll try another round if there's something that, um, we missed.
Are you going to close the public hearing?
I did already, but we have to vote.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second?
Justin.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Marker?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Ofield?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
The public hearing is closed.
Okay, so as I said, we're going to start and have a round of comments by the commissioners on the item. I'm going to start with Daryl, just go with that.
Can we ask that you speak up really loudly? It's very difficult for your
So, will everyone try and speak up loudly?
Yes.
I'm sorry if my voice dips as I speak.
Right, so, uh, let's start with the density bonus. This is something that's been circulated quite a bit. The typical, you know, you're looking at this thing here that said like a 5,000 square foot lot. The typical lot in West Berkeley is closer to like 3,000 or 4,000 square feet, not 5,000. 5,000 is like North Bray or Marymount or something. And, and those, you, you disagree?
No, my word is 5,000.
I mean, if you live on like an old Victorian grounds, but like
Okay, everyone's law is a different size. Let's let Daryl speak, okay? Let's, let, let's let Daryl speak, please. Well, I want to hear about everybody's individual story. So tell one, two.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm sorry. Whichever, the average in Berkeley is that. Whatever the deal is in Ocean View because it's an older track, I get it from the early 1900s. Now, um, the point is, is that the density bonus you're getting from that, say you get five units, you get 20% increase in density, or sorry, a 50% increase if it's a very low-income unit. That's going to probably get you to about eight units, assuming that you're putting a very low-income unit on there. No developer's building that. And we know no developer's building that because we already have R2A zoning in Berkeley where no such projects occur. So the density bonus only really works for the high-density stuff and the missing middle ordinance was designed to be low enough so that the density bonus really wouldn't hit practically any units. It doesn't make that much sense, so that's, that's the first thing. The second thing, I shouldn't do, the second thing is, is that if you look at the census data on average or median income households and dwelling units in Berkeley, the median income household for people who live in single-family homes, it's not saying everyone, but the median is close to about $200,000 a year. Now, if you go to duplex to fourplex, this is the census, I can publish it if you wish, the median is close to about $97,000 a year. So this is something that a lot of middle-income people will benefit from and I think that that's a really important reason to do it. And as someone who was raised at Delaware and 8th, where I lived in an apartment building that's now banned, was banned in the 19, 1967 because a lot of people were moving into West Berkeley, mostly a lot of black renters and there was a lot of homeowners, a lot of whom were also black, uh, that didn't really want them because they thought it was causing overcrowding. We passed R1A to functionally ban new housing in that part of the neighborhood and we've seen a pretty substantial increase in incomes and a pretty severe decline in diversity. So I think what's really important about missing middle and I really want to emphasize it, there's a million arguments I could hit. The point of the zoning code was to resemble what Berkeley kind of looked like before the mass downzoning in the late 60s happened. The sort of, you know, quadplex apartments you get. And that's another thing too, very quickly. When you look at things like Senate Bill 9, people said frequently, oh, well, state law allows you to build up to four units. But remember, where we're concerned about lot coverage, you're eating up sections of your lot, you're destroying open space to build accessory dwelling units. There's a big concern about that. Now, walk around the old parts of Berkeley, especially closer to Shatter, where there's a lot of quadplexes and triplexes. Actually, there's quite a few in West Bray before they were made illegal in the 60s. They are doing density with a lot of good lot preservation by not eating up side lots but by building up to two stories. You can see these houses, I mean, you can't even recognize them, you have to check for the utility boxes. So I think that, yes, we should have more discussion on this, but I do generally like how the missing middle proposal is planned. I do think it is something that really actually harkens back to Berkeley's heritage. But I know there will be more debate on that, so I'll, I'll stop my comments then.
Thank you professionally. That is not all. Um, Commissioner Vincent?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not good on the commissioner thing. I tend to want to call people by their first name and I gather I should be more formal.
Thanks. Well, uh, thank you all for being here. Um, you know, it's really great to hear from you all because planning commission is never this packed and it should be because we deal, deal with important issues. And obviously, any change in allowable density is super important, um, and the people that live in that area should hurt their ears up to be at meetings like this. So thank you. We've had a lot of meetings on this, as staff has said. Can I ask a question and forgive me if I'm misunderstanding this? Our charge tonight, the question at hand is just about, is our charge at hand, our question, just about merging the R1A and the R2 and not about adoption of this, of middle housing in our, the new R2?
That is correct.
That is correct. So looking at table two in the packet, it shows the density, you know, uh, or the density standards, development standards, sorry, for R1A, current R2, and then middle housing too. We are only talking about those middle two columns making this the same.
That is correct.
Okay.
I mean, the next step in the process is then the middle housing zoning change that happens.
Okay, because I have a lot of thoughts about middle housing, but that's not what's on the table. Okay. So the changes between the two, R1A, and it's funny, when I first came and it's funny, when I first came on Planning Commission a number of years ago, sort of before the pandemic, we spent oodles of time redoing R1A. And now it's potentially going to be abolished. Tony Nestor remembers.
All that work, yes.
So I guess, thank you for clarifying that. So in some ways, that limits our scope here. But I think that, you know, what staff has brought forward to us in terms of merging those two districts into one and having it be called R2 is very sensible. And it very much follows the direction that you've gotten from council over multiple meetings and the feedback that we have provided to you over multiple meetings. So I'll just let you know that I had support of this. I think that it's right in line with what you have been asked to do by council and commission.
Commissioner O.
Thank you. I think I'm going to abstain on this, and I'll just briefly explain why. I see the logic in merging R1A and R2, and I understand it's consistent with city policy when there's only slight differences in zones to try to simplify things. I really appreciate zoning ordinances being simplified. I think the narrow proposal in front of us makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate it. But this is, of course, inextricably, while distinct, it's inextricably linked to our missing middle housing policy that we've been discussing here. And the last time we voted on that ordinance, I voted against it. As much as I think there's a lot of good things in there, I sort of see it as a little bit like the cup is half-full. And I'm really kind of fixated on the half-empty portion. The city policy has been... Or city has adopted a resolution, I think unanimously in the past, when we upzoned we're going to also, in concert, adopt a land value recapture policy, which was not included in the missing middle item that came before the Planning Commission previously. And it's important to me that the city is consistent. It's, you know, what it says it's going to do and what it actually does.
Should we drop a little bit?
My final concern is what our consultants told us about so-called missing middle. With Commissioner Owen's point, they actually have a lot of duplexes and small apartments. The Lincoln Berkeley is actually like, missing middle is not the right term, but middle housing. Even developing market rate housing is basically unaffordable in Berkeley. So if we're passing this thinking we're going to solve our housing affordability crisis, I think it's just wishful thinking. And I wish, in concert with all of this, we were talking about a comprehensive social housing plan for Berkeley that addresses not just low-income housing, but middle-income housing, taking land and ensuring it's used for housing and not just continually circling around on the speculative market. But we're not having that conversation tonight. So again, I feel like there's some good things in this and there's some big components that are missing that have not been part of the conversation. So for that reason, I'm going to abstain from this item tonight.
Yeah, I think Commissioner...
Speak up, please.
Thank you. I will attempt to do so. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I think Commissioner Vincent makes a good point that we're voting on the map tonight. The concerns voiced here are really about the middle, missing middle housing legislation. I'll be voting for the map change. I think the difference between R1A and R2 is since the government doesn't make sense that we would have two very similar districts like that. I do want to speak, however, to the... Some of the claims that were voiced here tonight. First, I know that for those of you who own your home here, that that is probably the largest investment that you've made in your life. It represents something really important to you that's more than just the roof, that is more than a roof over the head. And the concerns are, oh, if there's a zoning change, I don't know what's going to happen in my neighborhood. I don't know who's going to be moving in next to me. It could be a disaster. I get that feeling from every person we spoke against this measure tonight. And I understand that feeling. I'm facing, in my own neighborhood, a change of zoning that would allow an eight-story building in the parking lot next to my backyard. And I learned about this. And I went to my wife and said, this is terrible. We got to move. And she said, no, we're going to stay where we are, and we're going to support the legislation. We need more housing in Berkeley. Now, there were people who said, oh, these high rises, we're approving them every week. Did any of you got... Don't speak. It's not open here. There was a Berkeley Sci article just a couple weeks ago that rents are back to 2018 levels. That's way too high. But it's the only time we've seen a drop in the rental prices here in Berkeley. And it's because of those buildings getting built. That's my belief. You may disagree. I think we need more housing in Berkeley. I, in concurrence with the speakers who spoke tonight, want to see more housing in Berkeley. And I will be supporting this bill. And I'll be voting for the zoning change tonight as well. Thank you.
Commissioner O.
I try to keep it short, but I think I first just want to echo Commissioner Vincent and just appreciate everyone showing up for this. This is the glamour that we hope the Planning Commission to bask in. It's a hot topic. And just to call out a couple things that I heard during the comment. You know, I heard a lot of support for housing across Berkeley on both sides of the issue, actually. I heard someone said it brought up the idea of a 30-year vision. And I actually would even challenge us to think in terms of a 100-year vision, 50-year, 100-year vision. This is really about thinking forward into the city, not that we have, but the city that we're becoming. And I... So to kind of build off Commissioner Khan's point, I got into the Planning Commission as a hobby, as an activity, because I live next to the North Berkeley Bar. So those eight-story buildings will be next to my house, right? I'm not going anywhere. I'm here to make the city that I want to live in, and it's going to be great. So I think, I just want to invite everyone to actually trust this conversation in terms of the technical part of making it really great. We're really trying our best. I think we are trying to make density happen while putting the structures in place to make it very high-quality density. I also heard, though, I think that a concern, and I share this concern about the public realm and infrastructure, what happens when density increases? What about everything between the buildings? I'd really love to have that conversation a little bit more in the future on this mission. And I heard a lot about sort of intergenerational obligations. So I hope we can kind of... That's where, what I come to this conversation with, is kind of thinking about what we have in the future. So, you know, this is a relatively small change. It may not feel like a small change if you live in R1A. But in terms of the total area of the city, this is really making this a lot like the rest of the city. Change is hard. Get it. This is a narrow action. We've heard it several times. And I think it's consistent with the conversations that we've already had in this group. So I'll be voting to move this forward, consistent with our previous conversations.
We can't hear what your proposal is. Could you say... Okay, well, we are a little challenged by not having amplified sound here. So we're trying, everyone's trying to do as best they can.
The conclusion is I will be supporting the proposed language.
I have a quick question. No, we can't do questions. I'm sorry. It just, that's the process that we have to follow. Commissioner Tu.
Hi, everyone. I just want to thank everyone for providing your input. I know we're getting late. I have no further comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Hauser.
I'll also try to keep it quick and loud. Appreciate everybody's comments. A lot of things really resonated and were common, even with differing opinions, support for housing, clarity and understanding of the process and of the zoning that we are going to live in and next to. And because of that, I think the merging of these two definitions or classifications are, these are very close. They make a lot of sense. And beyond that, to some of the bigger issues people were raising, this is consistent with the values of welcoming additional housing to our neighborhoods in a really organic and intricate and not drastic way. These are not, this is not the large multifamily types of projects that need to go places like North Berkeley Bar, et cetera. So, you know, I really feel like the best time to have made major zoning changes was 100 years ago. There's like a Japanese saying about the best time to plant a tree. The second best time to make those zoning changes is today. Because change, none of this means we will get more housing tomorrow. I wish it did. But we need to make these changes now so that the developments can actually happen. And many good things are brought to us in a way that is profit-motivated. My daughter's lovely piano teacher is profit-motivated. Housing, farmers, everyone who brings us things that we need, many people who bring us things that we need are in this world profit-motivated. So again, we... Housing is what we need, and this is the way the Planning Commission and the city can encourage that to happen. So I support the minor change.
And I'll have the last word unless there's someone else that wants, some of the commissioners want to reprise any of their comments, which is I want to, again, thank everyone for coming and for speaking. And I think we all take under advisement the information and the comments about the need to have additional information and opportunities to speak and express opinions and to have the chance to talk about the impact of changes on their own, people's own experiences. And I'm very appreciative of every... I don't think there was a single person here that said they didn't support additional housing for Berkeley and additional opportunities for people to live here in the sense that we are responsible for the next generation and for people who are other than able to live here now. So I'm... It's quite a wonderful part of being in Berkeley to be able to hear that. That said, I agree that this is... This particular item that's in front of us today is very limited to combining the R1 and R2 into a single zoning category. I happen to live in one of the places that's on this map, so it will have an impact on my house, which is in a small lot, which is not going to become 10 units all of a sudden I'm planning on living there for a long time. I do want to encourage everybody to continue to think about the proposed middle housing changes. And I think they provide, what I'm always looking for, is flexibility, thinking about the future, not putting handcuffs on us now for what we might need in 15 or 20 years, and also to not terrify ourselves about something that might not come to pass, which is like the 10-story house on my lot. I mean, you know, and to think about, maybe there will be a 10-story building on that house in 50 years. But it's 50 years from now, and there'll be many changes between now and then. So I'm also in support of consolidating these two zoning categories. So if we could have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Would you make a motion, please, Commissioner Khan? Could you say it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought I was... All right, I'll make a motion to merge the districts per staff's recommendation.
And Commissioner Khan has seconded it? And so can we have a... You'll read it to us, and then we'll have a vote.
Sorry. Let me just see how the... So I'm just rereading the way the recommendation is worded, which is that the Planning Commission recommends staff's proposal for amendments to the zoning map to redesignate parcels zoned R1A to R2. That's it. Sorry, I've got more on this screen, but that's the motion.
All right, so if you have a... No more comments, additional comments? All right, someone has to call the question.
We'll have to call the question.
All right. Commissioner Marker?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Ofield?
Abstain.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thanks, thank you, everyone.
I just have to say, this is what I do for... I think this is an example of performative democracy. And because... I just want to be clear. There's something crazy-making about having 23 meetings where 85% to 90% of people have well-thought-out, very strong concerns about this. We're not opposed to housing. We just want to decrease the density. And everywhere we go, people want to do whatever you want, no matter what they say. I don't get it. That's performative democracy. Why do we have this meeting?
Could everybody, please, that doesn't want to stay for the next item, please?
Okay, I'm leaving, but it's still crazy.
Okay, one minute. Take that comment. Every, the vast majority of people here are positive. Like, it's... Five minutes, five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. So back at 7:50.
Being aware whether the 1,000 square feet have one bedroom, two bedrooms, four bedrooms, or there are no bedrooms. So we're suggesting we just drop the bedroom distinction and increase it to 1,200 square feet for everyone. The second one is, goes back to the questions you were just asking. The current language in the code allows, and we fought hard for this a couple years ago, something you may remember, to allow someone with a converting and accessory structure building to add on to it up to the maximum size as long as the addition meets the development standards. So in your accessory structures on the property line, any addition you make... Am I done?
We have a minute.
She's...
Wait a minute.
Pardon? Is this as you represent the task force, or...
Do you want to take another minute?
She is representing the task force.
Go ahead. In your role as representative... In your role as representative?
Thank you very much. So, the language now would be as is currently in the code with the removal of the word legally established. That was what HCD put us here with. So, now we would be basically where we've been for a couple of years. The other change we'd like is some permission for rooftop decks, taking out the hillside extension and allowing the rooftop deck to have nine feet more simply for access to the rooftop and to the railings, because the height of the railing is included in the maximum height. So, that's just to make small lots and lots of land open space and just to allow us that smaller block sections of Berkeley to be stored some of that old space for family. And the last one is what Charles was discussing earlier, is just to allow detached or attached.
Thanks, thank you.
So, I guess I really have questions, which I know may or may not be answered. But does this apply to the hillside overlay to our, is it also going to take care of where we have our very high fire hazard zones? Because I do attend the disaster and fire safety commission and I know that we'll have the city council vote on June 17th on Zone Zero, which is five feet, where there's not supposed to be any vegetations, buildings. And I also know from discussions at the disaster and fire safety commission that after they enforce the Zone Zero on the first zone, which is east of Grizzly Peak, they're going to start moving down the hill because of the fire hazards in the city. So, it wasn't clear. I'm trying to scan the documents quickly.
It's a citywide condition.
So, are we working with our fire department?
Can I ask the staff to answer that question after we're done?
Yeah, so then my question would be, how closely are we working with the fire department and what they are trying to do in terms of fire mitigation and resilience?
Thank you.
After we get done with your answer.
Hi, my name is Bridget Schenk. I also want to just support this proposal and I also liked the list of items on the yellow page that we put forth too. Those are great suggestions, especially allowing for rooftop decks bigger size and getting rid of the bedroom requirements and leaving it a little more open and flexible.
Are there any more public comments? Okay, so we'll close the public comment period and then Branca, maybe you could answer Kelly's question.
Yeah, so.
We close the public comment.
First and then she answers.
Okay. Who seconded it? Merker moved and Khan seconded. All right, Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Chair Martinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes.
Branca, could you answer the question about the fire?
So, the ADU regulations apply citywide. So, whatever's in the zoning code applies citywide regulating ADUs. But each individual ADU that's been reviewed is also reviewed by our fire code. So, all these like individual cases of like building material and building separation would be reviewed at that stage and cannot actually be subject of the zoning ordinance amendments.
Answer your question. Diane, answer your question.
I don't, you know, I don't live in the fire zone, but my walk partner does and I fear this Zone Zero every minute of my life.
Then she should reach out to the staff, maybe someone who's on campus.
Yeah, so the fire code applies.
It's a big, it's a big deal.
So, we'll have some comments about this from the commissioners. So, I'll start at this end this time. Commissioner Hauser?
I appreciate this opportunity. Like, I feel like the opening statement by staff was getting this compliant, into compliance with state law. It's really important to have this process and hearing to understand what ways we need to be in compliance with state law, but absolutely support getting us into compliance with state law and not limiting our flexibility and find this very successful housing type towards the end.
Yeah, I would agree. A lot of these changes we are required to do by the state. These additional changes are fine as well.
Again, appreciate, I think, staff's explanation of how Berkeley is handling the requirements and also proposing the flexibility, kind of where needed to do it our way. Are we, can, I'd like to just comment a little bit on the item received from the task force. I mean, really appreciate the substance and clarity and specifics of this. I personally feel supportive of this whole slate of suggestions. But I'll just kind of speak to the first one, actually. So, I live in a house of about 1,200 square feet, a little under. I've got two kids. We're a household of four. It's a good size. It's a good size for having three bedrooms and having that kind of house that feels... We're a city of little worker cottages, but we don't have to live in super cramped situations. And I think this just opens this housing type up to more people, more families. And I would like to see us be kind, we talked about this before, just a little bit modest about what we think the normative household type should be for the next couple of decades in the city. And so, making it just more flexible, 1,200 square feet. You decide how you want to divide that up. Maybe the next owner subdivides it differently. That's fine. We'll always learn. So, just want to put my voice behind the first item in particular.
Commissioner Khan?
Yeah, thanks for the clarification, Branca, but I think the fact that I was confused by this indication that you and I are no longer with the city or whatever, somebody may forget. So, I think it would be good where it says that eight new construction ADUs are allowed from multiple, specifically say detached or attached, you know, new construction ADUs. Just can add that language. It would be very specific, clear. No one will have any questions about it. So, I'd like to, because that is part of the motion. I agree with comments from my, I don't know, Commissioner Merker about the 1,200 square feet, but this is more of a family style, particularly since we just passed the, or just proposed that the council passed the condominium conversion, it would actually allow for family homes to develop to backyards. So, that's a great, great idea to create a task force to come up with. And, yeah, no, probably the rest too. How do I generally support this slate of proposals?
Yeah, I support this too. I'm planning to vote yes. I think a lot of this is just stuff we have to do because of state law and the discretionary things we decided to do or talked about doing makes sense, like converting a garage to an ADU. I think this is a good policy overall. I'm concerned about the J-ADU rental term and I understand the staff recommendation is based on something HCD said that we have to, the agenda packet is we are going to remove the 30-day minimum rental term. I'm looking at page 47 of 156 of the agenda packet. I guess something in state law. I'm confused because there's a reference to a part of the government code here as citing that as like the reason why we have to not restrict the rental term. But I looked that part of the government code up and I don't see anything regarding the term length of rentals. So, maybe it's in another part of the code. I know when I'm researching the state ADU laws for other purposes, I find it very complicated and hard to follow. So, maybe it's there, maybe it's not. But I'm just, I'm concerned about this and if there's any room for pushback on this, I would like to have the 30-day minimum rental term stay in, if at all possible, because I think we're trying to promote the building of these units to have more housing for people who live here, not to be like Airbnb kind of rental units. So, if there's any room for modification, that's one thing I would really like to see modified. If we cannot change that because of something in state law that I'm not seeing or I'm not following and we have to say, okay, you can do J-ADUs and rent them out on Airbnb, then that in my mind kind of heightens the urgency around one of the council referrals to this commission that's kind of been languishing because we have so many other things that we're busy with at the time. But that is actually tightening up our short-term rental ordinance to kind of close some of the loopholes, give it more teeth, better enforceability, make it easier to collect taxes from companies like Airbnb that facilitate short-term rentals. So, yeah, either I'd like to keep the 30-day minimum rental term or if we really have to get rid of it, I would like for us to prioritize tightening up our short-term rental ordinance, especially in light of this. But even without this, I think that's a priority, but especially if we're doing this short-term J-ADU rental thing. I, that's, my sense of urgency around that is heightened. So, that's all I have to say.
Thanks. Commissioner, please.
That's a good point. Before my concept, can you clarify the rules on that as it relates to short-term rentals, Airbnb, et cetera?
So, it stems from the HCD letter and the government code that I'm looking at now is 66315, which actually says that the local ordinance cannot impose any standards that are not established in 66314. But it also says that a local agency may require that the property may be used for rentals of terms 30 days or longer. And I think HCD interprets that for units, whereas J-ADU is not a unit.
HCD told us that we can apply that to J-ADUs.
Okay, that's.
I'm conjecturing here.
Go ahead, yes.
That the J-ADU, it's just, it's just a part of the J-ADU because the J-ADU is part of your home that you convert, that you put a kitchen or whatever. And you, by definition, Airbnb parts of your home. So, you could Airbnb part of your existing home. It's not a new unit. And suddenly say, oh, you've built this. Now you can't do that. I think that may be what HCD was referring to. I'm in sympathy with what you're talking about for certainly new ADUs. I think you can restrict them, but I think it's removing a property right from a property owner. You say, oh no, you can't rent out part of your home as Airbnb's kind of thing. Because you can't, I mean, that's, I think that's, I suspect.
So, they're not distinct, you would say, I'm going to do it too. So, basically, that is saying it's consistent with you can rent out a bedroom in your house for three days if you want.
Right.
They're conflating the bedroom and the J-ADU.
But I'm presuming that.
I think that's what it is. Branca, do you think that's what it is?
Yeah, because, I mean, it is not considered a unit. So, it's more like renting a bedroom than renting a unit.
Okay, that's it. Jeff, did you have additional?
Yeah, I mean, my comments on this are, you know, I like what I see here. I mean, obviously, you're restricted by having to meet state rules on everything. But, you know, I like, I like a lot of the flexibility in here. I'm looking at this, these new items from the task force and I'm not finding anything that I would object to. I mean, I agree with, you know, given the opportunities for condoizing, you know, ADUs coming, you know, I think this 1,200 square feet is an interesting kind of sweet spot of space. I mean, obviously, that is dictated or governed by other issues around lot coverage and those kinds of things, clearly. You know, this legally established piece is interesting because I just know from living in the flats or just living in Berkeley, there's just so many, every lot is different and every situation of buildings on them is different over 150 years. And what I like that I see here in particular is a lot of flexibility to deal with that. I'm intrigued by the removed bedroom restrictions because I do hear, you know, the voice that we've set up here before, which is we shouldn't be assuming family organizations in the same way that we might have always done that. I think that's an interesting concept that Berkeley should be at the forefront of and I think that fits with that. You know, on the last one, again, I think it gives homeowners, property owners more flexibility. And so, I think, you know, I like that. I hadn't actually thought about the rooftop decks and I didn't realize that only the hillside was able to do that and I actually was offended when I read that. I'm like, oh, they get to deny a lot of housing and they get a rooftop deck? Hmm, as a flatlander, I was offended. So, I am absolutely wholeheartedly in support of number three, to be honest. So, yeah, yeah, I mean, I, there's nothing that strikes me as unreasonable here and within the bounds of what is in the HCD letter as well as what Berkeley has kind of wanted to do. And I think what I want to do in this commission, I think, is, you know, give that kind of flexibility with these unique circumstances, lots in particular. But also, who said it earlier, maybe it was Commissioner Merker about, you know, what's that city we want to kind of become? And I think that city that we do want to become is these sort of, you know, more gentle density, quote unquote. And that's why I've always supported middle housing and ADU work. So, I think this personally fits in with my mindset on that. So, didn't mean to speak this long, but I like what I see here.
Commissioner Khan?
No grand speech this time, but just one question. So, we do have clarity from HCD that the Airbnb ban is not legal for J-ADUs and generally for ADUs as well. Okay. Yeah, no further questions. I would have recommended ban there. I do.
Okay, before we make a motion, I'd like to have, I'd like to make, I'd like to figure out the best way to do this because we have these proposals that most of us have spoken in support of and they're amendments to the recommendation that we've been asked to make. And so, I just want to have a clear process for incorporating them that, that sort of uses our time wisely and doesn't entangle us into many, you know, changes. You've got an idea and Commissioner, Charles, Commissioner Khan has an idea.
I would like to move to accept all of the modifications proposed by staff tonight with the addition of those proposed by the ADU task force.
I'll second that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And now we have, is there a discussion? Does anybody would like to make a comment or discuss it?
Our question.
Does anyone disagree?
All right, Commissioner Owens, did you just have a question?
No, I was just curious. If anybody disagreed with doing what HCD tells us to do.
Justin?
I just wanted to add a friendly consideration. Considering the sheet here on number four, if the motion were, at the very bottom, you know, there's the term detached or added. As an alternative to that, the detached or could be removed, attached could be struck and it would just say new construction 25 feet. There's no distinction anymore in the ordinance between detached and attached ADUs. It's all about new construction. So, we could just say new construction 25 feet.
Can I ask that the task force is, feels that that would be a friendly amendment to this?
I'm not really, I'm not, I appreciate your point, Justin, but I have spent far too much of my life engaging in word misunderstandings in the code. I really want those words because it's clear. And specifically because it is unclear in the state ordinance. They don't prohibit attached ADUs in the multifamily. They just, it's ghosted. It's just not addressed. I think it's important that we make it very clear so staff has a clear direction there to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so then that is not, we're not, we have that. We just have the motion that you made. We have the second. And Commissioner Tu called a question if there's no one comments. So, we can throw it up.
Sorry, you had a question?
No, he called the question.
Oh, we called, sorry. Got it. Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yep.
Commissioner O'Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Chair Martinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you to everyone who commented on this and to the task force for providing us with this additional changes. Now, let's move on to our last item, which is. Number 10C. This is a public hearing. We're opening another public hearing on the amendment, or Title 23 to require undergrounding of transformers for private property. So, we're going to conduct a public hearing. We're going to receive public comment. And then, once that's done and we've had our discussion, we'll make a recommendation to the city council on proposed amendments. And so, we have, Branca's also going to do a presentation, excuse me, a presentation to us about... about undergrounding transformers. There's a lot of paper to that.
Where is, where is that? That's not Berkeley.
No, I just thought it was funny because it was leaning.
You've seen one of those up here.
Good evening again, commissioners. My name is Branca Tatarovic, and I'm an associate planner with the Land Use Planning Division. Tonight, I will present proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance that would require undergrounding of transformers on private property. I'll begin with a brief background on why these amendments are being proposed. Then I'll walk through the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, highlight key policy questions for commission input, and conclude with staff's recommendation. In recent years, PG&E has refused to underground transformers for medium-sized residential and mixed-use projects in Berkeley. Developers now routinely ask the planning department how to secure PG&E's approval. Previously, a zoning officer memo satisfied PG&E's requirements, but the utility has begun rejecting those memos for a variety of technical reasons. As a result, projects have been forced to install above-ground pad-mounted transformers, creating design and circulation challenges. In response, the planning department, in coordination with the planning commission, has launched an effort to adopt clear regulations governing the undergrounding of electric transformers. Staff is proposing the following amendments to section twenty-three, three oh four, one hundred of the zoning ordinance. First, require new transformers serving residential or mixed-use development on smaller parcels to be installed below grade. Second, expand the applicability of the site feature section so that these requirements apply across all zoning districts, not just residential. Staff is seeking guidance on two questions. First, should the underground transformer requirement apply only to all electric projects? This issue was raised by the city's Office of Energy and Sustainable Development. They are concerned that an underground vault could limit future electrification if a project is initially built with a mix of gas and, and electric systems. The second question is, what parcel size threshold should trigger the requirement? Staff currently recommends six thousand square feet, which would primarily capture middle housing projects. Your feedback on these two items will help us refine the ordinance language before it moves to the city council. Staff recommends that the commission conduct a public hearing, receive public comment, and recommend adoption of the proposed amendments to Berkeley Municipal Code, section twenty-three, three oh four, one hundred. Thank you for your attention. I'm happy to answer any question you may have, and I look forward to your discussion.
Okay, clarifying questions from the commission members.
Um, the, uh, I, I don't have a language directly in front of me, Branca, so, um, I may have misunderstood when I read this earlier. The six thousand square feet is the, any, is it, any, any property that is six thousand feet or above that would have to do the undergrounding, or is it six thousand and above? Okay, thank you.
My question was, is that a typo? Because I thought this was addressing larger developments. Like, I thought it was supposed to be six thousand or larger.
No, it's smaller because of the space post ratings.
So this is a recommendation for small projects, only, small residential.
Well, actually, to fairness to Branca, she's asking us to revise.
Yeah, that's a question. We just put six thousand provisionally.
So, okay, do you have a question?
Yeah, but you.
No, 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 hold on.
What is the reason PG&E has this default rule that they have to be above ground? Is it, is it because of that issue you mentioned about, like, it's easier to add capacity on if it's above ground? Like, what, like, is there a safety concern with them being below ground? What's, like, what's the, why are we even, like, having this conversation?
It's cheaper for them to service.
Above grounds.
They have procedures for both types of, um, of installing the transformers. So in general, it's not an issue. But they largely prefer above ground for business function.
Commissioner Merkle.
Question on the language, commercial, under commercial properties, or exclusively commercial properties, pad-mounted transformers may be permitted, provided that above-ground installation is accommodating public infrastructure design. Could you clarify what the intent of that is? Is that, is that, if I have a commercial property, an office park, I can put a transformer outside of it if it's for the reason of accommodating a sidewalk or something?
Yeah, new trees, sidewalk, anything that would be public infrastructure.
In, in, in the sense of accommodating, in the sense that there's no other option other than to have it above ground? I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what accommodating means, because I, I think from PG&E's perspective, they would prefer to accommodate it above ground. So what's, what does that mean exactly?
Now, it seems great to me, to be honest as well, but, um, the intention was to, um, to kind of, uh, separate the commercial projects from residential because they oftentimes include some public infrastructure. So if, uh, up, um, if the above-ground transformer can be integrated into that, then it can be a lot.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question, I think, about that same section of the ordinance where exclusively commercial properties, pad-mounted transformers may be permitted. What is a pad-mounted transformer?
From the slides, the one that's leaning. So there is a concrete pad and then transformer on top of it.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes there would be much larger.
It's a good standalone thing.
We draw it sometimes.
And, and that's above ground?
Yes.
Okay. But I thought the default rule is that they are above ground. So why are we saying they may be above ground if that's already PG&E's default rule?
Because now we are requiring them to underground with this change.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm so confused, but let's just move on.
I, I'm curious, like, what's the, is, what's this referral from exactly? Did I miss this? Like, I, I'm not aware of any, is there a, what, popular demand to put these boxes below ground?
Um, well, I, I, I explained what, what was the initiative beyond this. First of all, the department has been getting a lot of inquiries and a lot of rejections.
Planning Department? Okay.
Yeah, so that was our, um, like, com- common thing to deal with. And previously, we had that zoning officer memo, and, and PG&E was accepting that. So whenever there would be a request for undergrounding, zoning officer would issue a memo, and we would address the issue. But recently, they were just starting to reject the memo for various reasons. So that became an issue for, of course, our applicants, for our staff, or just the transformer being installed on the property. And then, um, also, we were, um, receiving a lot of inquiries. And then there was an, an initiative here at the planning commission to actually address the issue in any way possible.
I see, I'm just out of my.
I think, just to add, and Director Klein has told us that, sorry, that, uh, this is a, this is a weekly inquiry that he gets from project.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Tu.
The projects you're seeing that are requesting an underground transformer, what is the lot area of those projects?
I can speak, I can speak to that.
Sure.
I, uh, we, um, we're still on the Q and A, it's hard, and I have some positions I'd like to speak to at the appropriate hour. I still have a clarification, though, but I'll answer your question. I don't need time. Being commercial properties. If, if I have a standard lot, five thousand square foot lot on Shattan Avenue, and it's a commercial property, it's a music store, shoe store, or something like this, and I need a transformer, it looks to me like, in this language, that I would have to mount it above grade, which means it would take a chunk of my very limited street frontage away from, uh, my showing of my wares to the public and would be a damage to our urban infrastructure. Am I mistaken about that, or would there be a card out for that sort of thing?
We were aiming to, um, to apply this to larger commercial lots because we thought that smaller commercial lots would not comply with these requirements that we were setting.
Thanks for the answer. I think I have a solution for all of this.
All right, we have many more questions, questions. Okay, let's, is there any public comment about this?
Hi.
We'll have two minutes, and please say your name.
Judge Anne Kibigan. I'm wondering if, in the spirit of, again, flexibility for projects with solutions, if this is a PG&E problem, can there not be wording where we require PG&E to accept undergrounding if it's proposed? And that way, if a project sponsor wants to above-ground it, great. And also, like, then don't have to, like, try to figure out commercial, not commercial lot size. You're allowing the project sponsor to figure out what's most appropriate, but requiring PG&E to accept it. It's just a question. I don't know if it's possible, given what PG&E has told you. And I also had a question just down with your staff, is what types of projects are transformers usually required? Like, what single-family homes, I don't think, usually require transformers? And there's a lot of places that still have some above-ground wires. And so undergrounding a transformer in those areas is going to be really expensive for project sponsors. Thank you.
Would you answer that after we get done with all the comments?
Hi, my name is Jeff. As I read the, your proposed language, it says residential and mixed-use properties, um, it has to be underground, they're smaller, have installed below grade. But for commercial properties, it's not requiring that they be installed below grade. Provided the exception of upgrade installation. So I'm just not sure if what you intend to do is basically require that they all be below grade, except that commercial properties have some exceptions. Because that's not what it says.
Thank you. And one more?
So, Zach Russ. So I get the impression that this is like to give, um, developers a stronger doctor's note that they can, uh, that they can show PG&E to get them to do this undergrounding that they apparently don't want to do. But, yeah, I, as I understand it, undergrounding a transformer isn't cheap. And if, um, if someone new construction is required, it bears all of those costs. I assume that you're putting in some sort of exceptions process that allows them to not request this undergrounding. If, that doesn't make sense for their project. Thanks.
All right, are you standing up to say something?
Yeah, I'm just discussing my wife, who knows more about it than staff. What I'm hearing is that this is a major way for, especially commercial property, residential properties to be part of their expense. So if they can be avoided, if people go above ground, it's probably better than someone's property.
Okay, if there's no more comments, we'll close. How will comment, will you, uh?
Move to close.
Okay, one more motion?
Second.
Okay, second.
All right, Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Chair, uh, yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Chair Martinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, so now we can have some discussion about this. And I'd like to suggest that our comments try and sort of compartmentalize what we talk about so that we can give the staff sort of some general direction. I, I think, if I understand correctly, what was presented to us is a pass at trying to write an ordinance. And so we have a chance to shape it a little differently if that seems appropriate. So it seems to me that, that sort of three issues are sort of size and scale. When we would require an undergrounding of transformers, project type. I know, is it all commercial, is it only residential, whatever? And then the third thing would be, um, I guess, uh, whether or not there's an exception or it's a requirement all the time. So try and, let's try and focus our comments so that what they end up with is something that they can break into an actual proposal. So, well, this now, now we'll just.
Actually, I have a question for staff still.
Oh, there's a question for staff.
So.
And you had a question also for the staff, yes, I'm sorry.
Well, that, it's actually that question. So obviously, everybody in the room would like as much flexibility as possible. And what we would like is a law that is good for the developer.
What's the question? We're just doing questions.
The question is, why not?
Why not the exception?
Why, why not just say that, uh, you know, undergrounding of transformers is required by the city of Berkeley except when the developer, development team doesn't want to do it? I think the reason is because PG, PG would not accept that kind of law.
Yeah.
Was that your question as well?
It was also a question about how often, like, what types of transformers are transformers.
Yeah, so we did a little bit of research, and it looks like, um, if we are talking about residential, it's, uh, five units or more, it starts. It, it depends on the unit size, but five is the lowest.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, let's start with, um, Commissioner.
I'd actually like to start by, because I think it'll save you.
I can sit to that, go ahead.
He, he, he.
Oh, thank you. The, my concern with, first, I want to thank you guys for putting these together in record time. It's unbelievable, and I really appreciate it. And I think one of the things that happens when you put things together in record time is it doesn't give you time to do all your research. And I appreciate the rush, and I appreciate you bringing the question to us tonight. My biggest concern in, in talking about this, raising this issue back in March, really related to commercial properties, uh, commercial districts. I'll give an example. We are currently, I'm currently the architect for a building that's being built right now on Durant Avenue here in the city. A heavily, heavily, heavy pedestrian usage, one of the heaviest growing down telegraph that we've got in the city. It's got an eighty-foot wide frontage. It's considerably more than six thousand square feet. It's north of thirteen thousand, I believe. But that eighty feet of square, of linear frontage, were it approved under this ordinance, we would have a twenty-foot lined wall covering a quarter of that building. And I thought about it, and I thought, oh, maybe we need to increase it to fifteen thousand square feet. Maybe we need to increase it to twenty. I think that our commercial streets in Berkeley, our commercial districts, which we really don't, it's not that much of our city, but it's where our pedestrian traffic lives, it's where we, our public life is lived. That we need storefronts that are unobstructed for people walking by. We need it for safety, we need it for commerce, and we need it for reasonable urban life. And we should just, I think the six thousand is probably fine for the residential areas. But I'd like to add a amendment to this that, that says that above-ground transformers are not permitted in our commercial districts. And I, I know we spoke about this earlier, Brian, that you thought that might be something that could be incorporated legally. And I, I know we spoke about this earlier, Brian, that you thought that might be something that could be incorporated legally into the document. Right, that's, that, that's what I was, that's why I broke the line. Because it's a major change to the thing, and I think we need to...
But it also, it addresses what I asked everyone to do, is to focus on where we do it in the source. Okay, well, then we have that as a, you know, what looks like it's going to be an amendment, whatever it is. And Commissioner Owens, did you have something you'd like to add?
Right, okay, um, I think, I guess my general comment, and I don't feel like I have enough information to pass something like this at this time, but maybe my general comment to planning department would be, I don't see any particular need to segregate out, uh, residential and commercial uses. Um, so, maybe as like a general comment to planning, be like, um, why, would, would you have a problem with, number one, segregating out these types of uses, not having that? And number two, perhaps a proposal where, uh, you do default undergrounding unless the developer feels otherwise? Because what I think I've heard on this commission so far seems to be where people want to go. But that would just be a general comment. I certainly wouldn't be making that happen.
What we heard from a, from a person who's working closely with PG&E, if you have any kind of exception, they would go with that exception. They would push the developer to go that way.
Sure.
So, that's why we try to, uh, try to get as strong a language as possible, but still, you know, um, have, be mindful, you know, about the project type, use, size, and all of that.
Sure. So, I guess then, maybe the comment would be, what about the proposal to default underground in the exception that a project developer takes that away?
Because then they're going to convince the developer to install it above, above ground, because that, yeah.
I don't know then. I, I don't have a strong opinion on this.
Commissioner Vincent, do you have a question?
Yeah, I don't have any comments on this. I actually want to learn from listening to you. And I don't feel like I have a lot of information to make a judgment on the merits of this. So, you know, I would trust staff and, and planning director Klein. If this is coming from, from them, and they think it's going to fix something, I would, I would tend to trust that. Uh, but I don't have a lot of information to put that together in my mind. Well, this is a public hearing, so presumably, we're taking, we're supposed to take actions.
We'll, we'll take an action to make a recommendation.
Yeah, or, or change.
Commissioner Oakfield, sorry.
I know we passed the question time, I realize I have one more question. Who pays for, for doing this? Like, is it, if it's more expensive to underground, like, who pays that cost of undergrounding transformers?
The, it's developer cost, and this is a question raised by staff. I conferred with Mark Rose this morning about that cost issue. He represents a lot of, a lot of developers, as you know. Uh, and I can speak also for our, our clients. They would happily pay to underground a transformer, rather than lose 20 feet of their frontage on the street, and kill their lobby space, kill their retail space, um, and, and lose all the value. So, they, they will pay for that, so.
Do you want to say anything else?
No.
Commissioner Mark.
Yeah, so I, I think about this in sort of three, three buckets. There's, what's the negative impact to businesses? Well, let me just back up. I think we were just sort of, if nobody had to pay for this, I, sort of, speaking for the, you know, public life and vitality of the streets, we shouldn't have transformers anywhere. I, as a urban designer, I'm constantly designing around them, and it's a big pain. So, on the flip side, yeah, I think about sort of, like, what's the impact to a business's frontage? That's one thing. What's the cost impact to the person who has to bear it? And there might, despite Commissioner Owens' comment, there might, I'm just trying to think, is there some time when you, you know, would make it harder to build a project, actually? Because you have to, have to pay for that. And then, what's the public rounder pack, generally? And I guess, I would sort of start with, let's put them all underground, and just have a very simple carve out for, I, I, I'm open to this idea of commercial quarters, but I kind of actually want it to even more in areas, because I think they have a negative impact, almost everywhere they are. But I'm, I'm hoping, I guess, to considering that if it is simple and would include all the places that you're, you're bringing up, as important to preserve businesses, the street frontages.
Commissioner Tooe.
Yeah, I've worked on a number of mixed-use buildings recently, some where we could, some that came in before that cutoff, where we could go underground lot. It was a very large building, maybe a 20, 30,000 square foot site. It had underground transformers. And then, another building where they were above ground. And the above-ground one, you do just have this huge blank wall. Uh, yeah, PG&E, they have just been extremely difficult to work with, and had a cost over the public over the last several years. And I think they're just trying to cut costs wherever they can, because they had to pay out huge fines because of everything they've done. And, yeah, I, I fully support that we should, maybe for the industrial areas, yes, they have industrial power needs that may require above ground. But in the commercial zones, in the residential zones, we should require undergrounding.
Commissioner Hauser.
Those, I, second my fellow commissioner who deferred to those on, on the commission with more professional experience in this problem than me. And I, uh, glad this is brought to our attention, and that we can, this is the right form to do something about it. Um, because it is affecting our, or the experience of our, our urban places, public places. And, um, yeah, I don't see the need for differentiation between residential, uh, uh, commercial or lot size.
And I'll just take, um, I'll make the last comment about this, I think, which is that I also don't believe that there's a need to differentiate between residential and commercial. Thank you for mentioning the possible need that industrial areas may need more power, and therefore, maybe it's a little different than, I would say, underground wherever, because the situation you described changes the character of the urban experience. And that's true whether it's in the commercial area, where it's very clear, or whether it's in a neighborhood where someone's on the sidewalk and, you know, a mixed-use area of housing, and, you know, the sidewalk is constrained by the, by that. So, I'm all for requiring them all to be underground. And I suppose, although I, I agree that if there were an exception, PG&E would push the developers not to do it. But I, in the interest of some kind of flexibility in an extreme situation, I wonder if there isn't a, like, like the industrial situation. I mean, I guess, but that would be the only exception I would imagine. So, that's how I feel about it.
Then I'd like to give you my question.
So, go for it.
Okay, well, I really appreciate the comments from my fellow commissioners here. And I will adjust my position accordingly. Um, what I would like to do is that we approve the undergrounding of transformers as proposed by, or is outlined by staff, drafted by staff, with, uh, the modification that we will require undergrounding of transformers in the commercial and residential zones of the city. Excluding magnetic terms, there are, we don't want to say that. There would be the commercial and residential zones, but the transformers required, they should be undergrounded.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, I, I was aiming to use the use of the property rather than zone, because sometimes you, you, you can have mixed-use residential project, um, in MUR, for example. So, that could be a problem. So, maybe going by use, not by the zoning dish. So, applies, uh, citywide, but then single out the, the concrete use of the property.
So, it would be residential, or mixed-use, or commercial?
Yeah.
Um, that, I, I, I can rephrase it in those terms. I just want to be sure that we're capturing all of the relevant, there's so many different uses in the code that, um...
I have an idea.
It's hard to imagine any use in the commercial district, or the residential district, where we would want to be involved with a transformer. And so, I think it's simpler to just say, we don't allow them in commercial districts. We don't allow them in residential districts. But you have an idea?
Yeah, we could have two parts. First one is that transformers must be undergrounded in all residential and commercial zones. And then, residential, commercial, or mixed-use properties in manufacturing.
Citywide.
Citywide.
Oh, I see, that's what you were trying to add.
Residential, commercial, and mixed-use projects citywide, plus also have an underground transformer.
So, it's like, it's a, it's a adding those in to the list.
Yeah, it is pretty cool.
Commissioner Owens, do you have a...
Then, then why don't you just do it by default? And then just say that the only places we're not going to do it is like the four manufacturing districts.
Because you could have a residential use in some of those.
In the MUR.
The MUR is problematic.
I, um, I think that's a very elegant solution, Commissioner.
I, so, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Then I'll second it.
May someone want to call by that way?
Can you just, um, you said, sorry, just to restate it, it was to, the staff proposal is the motion, with the modification of requiring undergrounding in all residential and commercial zoning districts, and residential mixed-use or commercial uses citywide?
Yes.
I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Seems wordy, but...
Commissioner Oakfield had his question.
So, do I understand that, like, okay, so I, I really don't like it when we do these, all these, like, spoken modifications of, of things, because, like, I like to see things in writing. And I find oftentimes, in the planning commission, when we've done a motion by, like, speaking orally and adding things and modifying things, afterwards, everyone has a different recollection about what we actually voted on. So, I don't like voting on these kinds of motions. I prefer to see things in writing, because I'm a lawyer, and that's how I am. Um, but it sounds to me like, I'll try to work with this speaking out the motion thing. It sounds to me like we're actually taking, like, the main paragraph that the staff drafted, paragraph one, underground requirement, and we're just actually striking through all of A and B altogether. And we're saying it is undergrounding of transformers is required in residential mixed-use and commercial zones, and residential uses throughout the city. Like, we're doing away with all this new ones.
Yes, okay, so to be clear...
We're basically just rewriting.
We're striking one and replacing it with a general provision that it would be, uh, undergrounding would be required in all commercial and residential zones, and for all mixed-use residential and retail, commercial, and commercial projects, safe.
And just so I further understand, what is your motion? This, this would apply to someone building, say, a duplex?
It wouldn't have...
Yeah, duplexes don't have transformers.
No, because it, well, it's 6,000 square feet or smaller, and containing five or more...
But we're, as I understand, we're striking...
A duplex is required transformers.
Transformers are not required in all projects. It depends on the size of the project and the nature of the...
We are just not, so if your project is big enough to require a transformer, you're going to have to do it underground.
Oh, okay, so we are removing the size again.
Can we just pull up the, um, do you have the word?
Version?
We're just going to pull it up, so we can strike out what you're talking about, so everyone can see it.
This is what happens when you have an attorney that's working out.
You know, that's a really good, we should try and do that each time we do that, if we can. I know it's hard for the person doing it, but I, I agree, and makes it easier for everybody to understand. Even those of us that aren't.
Do you want to take a drawing?
Oh, sorry.
Is this new construction?
No, I'm sorry, yeah.
Or you're understanding?
You have it?
It's open.
I'm sorry, we had a question about new construction. But, yes, we're, we're talking about projects. You're, you're talking, this, your idea, your commission refers to new construction.
Yes.
Oh, no, it's, oh, still.
I think I have.
You can always do, read only what you have in your status.
Yeah, it's not retroactive. No, it's not. There it is.
So, the motion is to strike section one, so...
Of what?
Section A and B. And to replace it with language that says undergrounding requirement. You could just say in all, uh, commercial and residential districts.
Do you want me to try?
Yeah.
Oops, where's the cursor again? So, this goes away.
Strike all, it's easiest to do it all at once. No, 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 leave that, the fencing, since we're striking, since we don't, we have to underground it, we don't need about the fencing.
Yeah, I'm with it, all the way to be.
All the way to be.
Right.
That's it.
Yeah, that's, okay. Um, oh, doesn't let me, um, do say that. Sorry. Motion. Is that what you're asking? Okay. Please, success file. Oops, now I want to see. Okay, so the undergrounding requirement will now say something new.
Right, and would you like to give it a shot?
Sure. Okay, uh, first one is residential, commercial, and mixed-use properties. For residential, commercial, and mixed-use developments...
Sorry, I'm behind you. Commercial and mixed-use properties?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Projects? Projects?
Yeah, we didn't say projects, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, for residential, commercial, and mixed-use developments, all transformers serving the development shall be installed below grade.
Oh, my gosh, I'm not even a good typist right now. Um, sorry, mixed-use projects, all, um...
It's the last line, same sentence, you can just copy it over. Yeah, this section, yeah, just drop that in there.
Okay.
Maybe you just have to retype it, since, yeah, Word is uncooperative also.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, just, just retype it, Microsoft is just like PG&E, your hardwares.
Okay.
Okay, then, the second one is residential and commercial zones. And this one should be all projects in residential or commercial districts. All transformers serving development shall be installed below grade.
Same line.
Yeah.
The same language.
I'll fix the typos in a second later.
Yeah, that's it.
All right.
I'm due.
All right, um...
So, do all of us understand the difference between A and B, and why they're both included here?
Yeah.
The result, I think, maybe it's off of the point, I'd like the result is that there's... I'd like the result is that there's in manufacturing areas, there could be in special, like specific plans or unclassified or I guess parks. They could be in, out of the landscape.
Right, so the idea here is that if you have a factory, you can still have an above-ground transformer. But at the same time, if the city wants to build a library, it can also put it underground.
Yep, good view. Sure, I'll hold it up.
Yes.
I'd like to.
We did have a, we had a second to the...
That was the second.
The second.
Commissioner Tu.
Okay. Someone will call the question? Commissioner Khan called the question, could you?
Okay, so motion was two and second was Khan. All right. Commissioner Marker?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Great. Thank you for putting it on the screen.
Yeah, thank you for asking. This makes our life better after the meeting.
Okay, we have a couple more items before we can adjourn. We have information reports about the general plan and the housing element progress report.
Oh, the informational report was just the, it was part of your packet. It wasn't a presentation.
Okay, it's their correspondence. The next commission meeting is Wednesday, July 16th at 6:00 PM. And we would like to adjourn if we have a motion.
A motion we adjourn.
Seconded.
And...
All right. Commissioner Marker?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes, with a Khan at.
Comment.
Go Emily. Great job.
Commissioner Martinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, okay, so everybody in Hawaii. I'll be in.
Well, then we go, that's our caucus. We're at the most thick though.
That was cut out.
So the motion for the minutes though is to strike 23, right?
I think it would be, let's see, is this like the whole, was the staff proposal that was the staff proposal?
Right, so it was like amend the staff proposal.